Good evening, this is a call to order for the Bridgeport Board of Education regular meeting. Today is March twenty-four and it is six thirty-five. Can everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Mr. Benahan, can you take the roll off?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Good evening, everyone. Christine Baptiste Perez. Icha Casamir.
Here.
Ms. Maritza Estremera Jimenez. Mr. William Medina. Ms. Jennifer Perez. Mr. Joseph Sokoliv.
Present.
Mr. Robert Traver. Mr. Woodson.
Present.
Got a call from Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're gonna hear from our student representatives. And then we have a few, we have four in person and. It may have some online, but we'll go in person first.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Daniela Gomez and I'm a junior at Fairchild Wheeler Biotech. These past few weeks have been very busy for us. On March twelfth, our junior students participated in our SAT bootcamp, where we were able to practice using Blue Book, which prepped us for the SAT that will be taken on April tenth. On March fourteenth, our National Honor Society students hosted a Pi Day fundraiser, where students could buy tickets to Pi a teacher and we had a lot of fun. Then, on March nineteenth, Mr. Reyes and his civics class were able to visit the Superior Court in Bridgeport and were able to see some live cases in action. Now for some things that are coming up. On March twenty-sixth, our students will take part in our NGSS bootcamp, giving them a chance to practice their skills for the NGSS. Also coming up, report card conference days are on April twenty-third and twenty-fourth for us students in bio. This third quarter has been super busy but super amazing. And the quarter will be ending Friday, April fourth. So that's all. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. I'm Johnny Moore Sappo, IT's junior representative. Two weeks ago, we had the Marines join our physical education classes, allowing students participating in a bootcamp-style class and learn the different opportunities available with the Marines. On March twelfth, we successfully completed our SAT bootcamp through College Board's Blue Book, Blue Books app, which similiar how the SAT, PSATs will be, with similar test questions and timing. After completing those tests, students receive their scores and the areas of improvement and learn test-taking strategies. In preparation for our SATs on April tenth, teachers are engaging every day on SAT do-nos in which students answer an SAT question and review why it's correct and why others are incorrect. A group from our Fundamentals of IT and Advanced IT Problem-Solving classes attended a nurturing field trip to the IDEA lab at Sacred Heart University in where students had participated in soldering, virtual reality, and three D printing while understanding engineering processes. Our embroidery machine for our makerspace has arrived and is currently being set up to create school merchandise and understand the management behind it. All proceeds will go back to supporting school activities and technology upgrades. On April second, we'll have our pathway showcase to raise awareness of the different opportunities available for students before they graduate, which include getting college credits or industry credentials to boost their post-graduation plans. Six science fair projects from IT were presented to the state and three were selected as finalists who presented their projects at Quinnipiac University. That is all. Thank you, board members.
Alright, good evening. Oh, I get it right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Beca and I am the representative for Central Magnet. And for Central, this is what I have to share. Currently, we are celebrating Women's History Month and right now we have daily student announcements over the intercom about famous women in history and we also plan to have an end-of-the-month assembly about the matter. Spring sports practice has also begun today for volleyball, tennis, track, and baseball and they are going very well. We are also planning a nice spring dance on April fourth, which is open for all Central students and is meant to fund the upperclassmen events. Now, for upperclassmen events, the Junior Ring Dance, it's set for May first, I believe, at Anthony's Ocean View, which is in New Haven. And for our senior prom, that would be, I believe, May thirtieth at Cascades, which is in Hampden, but the dates are subject to change, I believe. And for now, we also plan to hold a College Acceptance Day and that will be in early May for the class of two thousand twenty-five. But we also have began announcing the set graduation date to students as Friday, June thirtieth, so the board said. And for ongoing and what we plan to do for the future, we are currently having a prom dress drive and we are taking in any fitting dresses suitable for a prom's usage for the girls. And the CHS Scholarship Fund Committee, they're also raising money for the graduating seniors. Local businesses, we're contacting them for subsequent donations. And if possible, if you want or you want to make a donation, you can contact the director of the Magnet program, Ms. Bernard Patterson, if you are interested in donating. Other than that, things at Central High School have been eventful as we plan to prepare for the SAT more and we look forward to a good rest of the year. Thank you.
Do we have any online? Any students online? Okay. Alright, thank you for sharing. Alright, let the record show that Mr. Traver has also joined the meeting. Next up, we have public comment, so we'll begin. And Ms. Baptiste Perez has also joined the meeting. Alright, our first speaker is Rebecca Cabrera. You just click on the microphone.
Good evening. We also have two other speakers signed up consecutively that they're going to yield their time to me, if that's okay, Sahana Smith and Lindsay Davis. Dear members of the Board of Education and Dr. Avery, we come before you tonight as the BCAST membership to discuss the immense need to save our current district-wide assistant principals, social workers, school guidance counselors, and special education district-level supervisors for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year and beyond. The current proposed budget cuts will result in the loss of approximately twenty-four positions, including eighteen assistant principals. It has been stated multiple times that we don't want to affect our classrooms. But cutting these integral staff members at the school and district level will have a major negative impact on our classrooms and is not in the best interest of our children. Bridgeport Public Schools is the largest and one of the most diverse school districts in the state of Connecticut. However, despite our size and ever-increasing needs, we continue to cut human capital, which is our most valuable resource. Cuts on paper do not reflect the real human impact on our schools. One of the most impactful decisions made for Bridgeport last year was hiring assistant principals for each elementary school. As you know, assistant principal responsibilities at any level extend beyond administrative tasks. They work alongside principals as building instructional leaders to guide and scale the instructional priorities of the school district and to provide for the evaluation and coaching of our teachers and staff. They also work to build a positive climate and culture in the school and assist with shaping positive student behavior within the school. They assist in the supervision and safety of all of our students and staff in the school building and assist with medical interventions when there is no nurse to support the building for the day. They build trusting relationships with our students and our children rely on them for their continued behavioral and academic growth. In addition, each student with special education services must have a minimum of one PPT per year as their annual review. Some students may require more than one PPT, depending on whether it is their evaluation year. A principal or assistant principal is required at every PPT and they act as the chair of the PPT meeting. They work to ensure compliance with special education laws and regulations. Many schools hold PPTs over multiple days per week to meet the needs of their school. In addition, SRBI meetings, which support our students who need Tier-two and Tier-three intervention supports, require administrative presence as do five oh four meetings, which are run by our school guidance counselors. With the loss of our homeschool coordinators in years past, the responsibility to maintain and increase our parental involvement has also fallen to the administrative team. We have worked diligently with our parents to maintain PAC meetings, host student recognition ceremonies, and host and plan multiple larger parent involvement events. Thus, the need for assistant principals who can take on multiple building responsibilities remain imperative. Last year, due to budget cuts, we lost valued staff, including our easy teachers at the elementary level, who provided Tier-three intervention services for our struggling students. This loss of staff has increased the responsibility onto our classroom teachers and others. It has also potentially led to an increased number of special education referrals. The need for special education supervisors is paramount as the number of students who have special education needs continues to grow. The district's special education supervisors support in-district, out-of-district, and charter schools. However, due to the already experienced cuts in the special education department this year, they have even less time to support our specialized programs in our district schools. Their guidance is integral in the PPT process and program and placement of our students with IEPs. Their guidance is also needed as many of our schools, our school specialized programs are being covered by long-term substitute teachers, not certified teachers. We need more special education staff, not less. In addition, the long-lasting impact of COVID is definitely not over. We are experiencing a mental health crisis with many students who are exhibiting significant academic, behavioral, and social-emotional difficulties, including trauma-based responses. Social workers and our school guidance counselors are the staff who specialize in utilizing trauma-informed practices with our students. Social workers service many students' IEPs and are involved in the student special education evaluation process. They also work as a valued member of our crisis team. School counselors coordinate and craft students' five oh four plans, work on student success plans, support student attendance concerns, support high school and college and career readiness, and support the counseling needs of many students in addition to their other responsibilities. How can we consider cutting social workers and school guidance counselors who work directly with our students to improve their lives? In closing, please do not eliminate or reduce the number of BCAST positions, nor the school's social workers and guidance counselors, as it would be a detriment to our school communities. We are willing to brainstorm with you to find other cost-saving measures other than human capital. We are an excellent administrative and support team who have the education and support of our children and families at the forefront of our daily work. Respectfully, the BCAST union membership. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Do I have to say my address? Okay. I'm here today to talk about my job as a restorative interventionist and how important it is. I understand you face difficult decisions, but I urge you to consider the impact that our schools will take. My name's Omar Resto. I'm a Bridgeport resident for forty-six years and I served the Board of Ed for twenty-four years. I, like many other restorative workers, were ISS officers originally and we transitioned into these positions, unknowing that we were going into a contract position. We provided a layer of support, we provide a layer of support for administration, social workers, guidance counselors, teachers, by supporting and mentoring in some of our most at-risk students. Our efforts significantly reduced the burden on administrators and improved school safety and student well-being. We empower students to advocate for themselves, communicate, provide, we also provide a safety net for unnoticed trauma that slips by. Some of this support, we support academics, prevent bullying, and monitor attendance, which improves our attendance in our buildings. The results are clear: lower suspension rates, fewer physical altercations, reduce chronic absenteeisms. Our work is cost-effective and essential for fostering a positive school environment. I urge you to reconsider our value and reconsider any cuts to these positions. Every day, we make a difference with our children in school. Thank you.
Jess Resto, PCM PAC president, parent of two, and a wife dedicated to a restorative specialist, a wife to a dedicated restorative specialist. About a year ago, many of us stood before the Board of Education warning of financial irresponsibility. I personally was spoken over and my speech was nearly suppressed. Now here we are, facing the consequences of those decisions. Tonight, I had to choose between attending the state listening session, which they conveniently scheduled at the same time of this meeting, or standing here to address the very real impact of these para and restorative cuts. I chose to be here because these cuts directly affect our classrooms and the overall school climate. How do you expect our already overworked and underpaid teachers to take on responsibilities of paras and restorative staff? The roles are not optional, they are essential. My husband has dedicated nearly twenty years to this district, supporting and uplifting our children versus a para, then one-on-one, ISS, and now as a restorative specialist. I have never seen him more fulfilled than he is in this role. He makes a profound difference in the lives of our students every single day. He ensures that each child feels safe, valued, and respected. He listens to them, supports them, and yes, even cries for them. Everywhere we go, former and current students stop us to share how much he's impacted their lives and I'm proud and honored to have my children get to witness that. The truth is, we all have benefited from someone like Omar Resto. I know because I was once that neglected child. And now I know exactly what you're taking away from these kids and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to talk a little bit about special ed. You guys got a chance to hire twenty teachers for special ed. That's a blessing because we can't even get one. You got a chance tonight to vote to put twenty of them because my commitment was to work with Dr. Avery and his staff. I haven't thrown one complaint yet, one lawsuit. You take my lawyer's money and your lawyer's money and invest it into that because that's a win all day long. Twenty teachers, you imagine? You can't get one and we're gonna get twenty. I hope you vote and send those teachers to school and get that diploma and put them in the classroom.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Estable Martins and I'm a student representative, IT, Fairchild Wheeler IT. But today, I'm not here only as a representative of IT, but also as a student. We're here today to discuss two important topics, including the possible elimination of restorative practice positions like Mr. Omar. He's one of my teachers there. I can't name just myself. I can name twenty students that every day work with him and talk to him about things that happen in their lives and how he helped them during the day. And I want to emphasize the importance of this work, his job and their job. He provides essential support for students, helping us navigate challenges and build a positive school environment. So before we vote for their jobs today, I hope we keep in mind that how important for us students their job is to help us. So, thank you. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Do we have Ashna Wither? Just click on the microphone.
Okay. Good evening to our Board of Education members, Dr. Avery, our acting superintendent of schools, and everyone here in person and for everyone watching online. My name is Ashna Wither and.
I'm Audrey Badia.
Both from Basik High School. We are happy to welcome Dr. Riola back to Basik. Dr. Riola and the rest of the administrative staff have been working, have been working consistently and collectively to change the climate of our school. We are happy to announce that last week our unified team took part in track at Bryan McMahon, followed by St. Patrick's Day Parade. We learned that Basik is in the process of joining the Southwest Conference. Today, our juniors took the IAB for NGSS science test. Tomorrow, at March twenty-fifth, our ninth and tenth graders will be taking their PSATs while our juniors take the ACTs. The National Honor Society has had a St. Patrick's Day fundraiser to improve and donate to the school. We are happy to report this few amazing things from our school. Thank you for having us here.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Albert Benahan. Very simple. I believe everyone say everything clear here. We don't have to be cutting stuff. I know we need to save money. We understand that. We need to save money. But I believe we need to save money from the people, from the top. None of the people who have low income. They work very hard. Sometime they got two jobs to take care of the house, business, family, everyone. It's very obviously, I believe everyone here say everything very clear, how to save money. And we need this staff because sometime when people there inside the building, these people were working so hard, they're outside sometime. After hours, they do a lot of thing with the students. That sometime some people, they are home. Board members, they know sometime we outside deal with a lot of parents and students. We all know that, right, board members? We do a lot of things, including weekends too. But these people work so hard, sometimes two jobs, three jobs. I know staff that have three jobs and you want to cut. We got people, you can maybe, you know, can cut from the people from the top, but not the people for the low income. They work very hard, you know? And I'm gonna stand next to them and I'm gonna fight for them because I know they need us, they need, to be sure, they need our students. How many, do you really know, board members, that we have students, they trust the staff a lot? A hundred percent. So let's think before we act because I'm not here to cut no more. I know we gotta cut, but I'm done, it's done. We need our people. We need our staff. The people work very hard for Bridgeport Public School. Thank you.
It would give us fifty-five million dollars. We wouldn't have to make cuts. Senate Bill fifteen-eleven. If each and every one of you went home and spoke to your state rep and your state senator, call them up tomorrow about Senate Bill fifteen-eleven, it would go a long way to giving us the money so that we won't have to cut anything and can add things to the schools. Our deficit is twenty-five million. We'll be talking about that tonight. This would give us thirty million more. Think what we could do with thirty million more. Not just not cut, add. Finally, start to make progress to improving our schools instead of trying to keep our heads afloat. You all know me. I've been with the schools since two thousand and one. I was a parent since nineteen ninety-three. I have a granddaughter now, pre-K three, another one coming in two more years. Senate Bill fifteen-eleven. The governor won't support it, but there are people in the legislature that do. We have a chance to get this bill passed. Please go home. Please talk to your neighbors. Please talk to whomever else you know. This is what we need. There's nobody in this room that wants to cut a thing. We're not sitting here tonight going, oh, I can't wait to cut some more staff. Believe me about that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item is the approval of meeting minutes from the regular meeting on March tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Medina, seconded by Mr. Traver. Any debate on that? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That one passes. Next up on the agenda is the chairperson's report. I want to thank Mr. Rapice, who invited me to the Middle School League's debate at the Capitol this past week and was hosted by Senator Gakar Wilcox. The students were able to debate on the Senate floor in a mock debate and it was a nice opportunity for the students and also just to see how far that the league has become, has come. There is a debate this weekend for a tournament for Women's History Month at Discovery School, so that's at eight-thirty this weekend. We have our board training next week on the thirty-first. There is a conflict, obviously, with the community forum, so we're working on adjusting the times of both. So that will be sent out to you by tomorrow morning if there is adjustment of times or the location of our training might be at the same location as the forum. Alright, board members, you just received in your emails email from the state's commissioner's attorney regarding superintendent search. That is gonna go to our legal to discuss, so we'll meet as committee of the board to discuss that. That was just sent at four o'clock today, so we'll leave it at that. And if you have questions, read your email and we can talk as a committee for the search. There is no other items I have, so I'll take questions. There is no other items I have, so I'll take questions. Yep, Ms. Estramera.
I have a question. It's more so of a request. So we're here and a lot of the discussions tonight are gonna be around cutting. I'm proposing that we reconsider where we host these meetings because they are more costlier. Um, to the district to have them here at Aquaculture and it's much more cost-effective to hold them at City Hall. Here, we have to worry about security. We have to worry about overtime, increased utilities. So I propose that we move them to City Hall where the city um already covers those expenses. That's it.
I'll, I'll inquire with the city on that. You have to get permission from City Council.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Not, it's, no, we're not taking public comment right now. But, but you could, if you, if you, if you'd like to ask question, you could email us. You could provide email or if you wanna talk to him directly, you can. All righty. Um, next up, we have uh finance committee referral or reports. Finance.
Good evening, everybody. Since the last finance report at the last meeting, there were several encouraging developments before the meeting. There was a decent follow-through on advocacy efforts suggested by the committee and resulted in a good turnout for Cave Day on the Hill. Where board members and staff turned out in numbers to lobby our legislators to discuss our financial needs. Testimony surrounding a few bills, mostly Senate Bill fifteen eleven and that concerned disconnected youth, which Mister Traver just thought, talked about. That had a decent turnout from the city of Bridgeport. More than ten percent of the speakers were Bridgeport residents or staff. Six members of the board provided testimony for via Zoom and two submitted written testimony. Superintendent and staff also testimony, testified. Special thank you to City Councilors Ernest Newton, Dasha Spell, and Maria Vaje for also testifying in favor of this bill. I hope it passed, passes. That being said, budget cannot be balanced on hopes and dreams. Which brings me to the last committee meeting and report. The committee met on March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and there were three agenda items listed today that will be voted on. One will reduce the budget gap, one will raise the budget gap, and one will have a neutral impact on the budget. I will defer that discussion until the agenda items appear. Most concerning this during this meeting where it was expected the gap would potentially be reduced, it went up. This was due to one budget-neutral item being voted on tonight being incorrectly included as a savings of nine hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. And a light item of an additional two point five million dollars that was included with a generic heading with no suggested cuts. This raised the total projected, expected gap at the end of the meeting by a net of two point one one million dollars. Because of the lack of recommendations. The CFO estimated we need to cut about thirty-four million dollars to balance that, assuming no additional funding. There were some discussions stating there was a delay in eliminating assistant principal positions. Which is irrelevant to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, as that's already balanced and it's already baked into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I literally felt the need to explicitly state that we are legally obligated to deliver a balanced budget and that the committee needs staff, the superintendent. And its finance staff prepare a manual potential cuts for the very real eventuality of tens of millions of dollars in additional cuts. That will have to be made prior to June thirtieth to close of the fiscal year. A couple of concerning statements were made. We don't wanna cause a panic. There will be a significant impact on the classroom. Seems that there may be a climate of fear that is causing a paralysis in decision-making fatigue among the board and administration. Need to push past that. Once again, to all who are listening, we as a board cannot do our jobs without information and we need to balance the budget. A failure to do so, and if we don't get together, the state will likely come and do it for all of us, the board and administration. Next, we discussed the February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five financial update and how it needs to be posted by law on our website. The CFO expressed that it would be done. We were told it would be posted. To date, this website is still lacking the December and February quarter living reports in violation of C T General Statute ten-two-four H C. I would hope that gets posted as soon as possible. This brings me to my final concern and update. Two order firms submitted bids on February twenty-eighth. Request one out for the responses to be rated in order to bring the final firm before the board for approval. We are waiting on the responses of two P P S staff members in order to move forward. I have justice twice. With the superintendent over the last two weeks, second time being March nineteenth, and it was assured it would be done. Today is March twenty-fourth, and to date, I do not see responses from the two staff members. The order is imperative in gaining community trust and finding efficiencies. Even if we only find one percent efficiencies, that will lace the three million dollars in cuts we don't have to make next year. It is imperative that we move forward as soon as possible. The next finance meeting will be on Thursday, March third, where I hope we can have the superintendent and his staff present some additional suggestions cuts for the committee to refer to the full board. To consider, discuss, modify, or approve. Thank you.
When's your next committee meeting?
Thursday, March third.
April third?
April, oh, thank you, I'm sorry. April third. Thank you for the correction.
All right, um, I, there is confusion because we thought your committee meetings were third Thursday of the month, not the first on another.
Well, according to point of information, we are facing an additional twenty-eight million dollars in cuts. As I stated in the beginning, when the first chair was given to chair the committee, there will be multiple meetings every month until we address this budget. We cannot do only one meeting, meeting a month.
We'll go from there. Next, and we're gonna pass over Mister Traver's committee. We'll come back to him. Policy and personnel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As our last meeting, uh, we have four items that are gonna be up for today, including a possible, um. Proposed that we uh suspend by law ninety-three, ten. Uh, we have already posted uh Title Nine. Um, and uh, next meeting will be April ninth. That is the second Wednesday of the month as planned, and I'll take any referrals.
Any referrals for policy and personnel?
I just wanna make clear that I do have one on the table already by Miss Jimenez that I'm working on that will be on uh April ninth meeting for sure. Chris. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, facilities committee um has not met since their last um board meeting. Uh, we will tentatively meet next Wednesday, um, April second, at a time to be determined. Any referrals? I know we're gonna be talking about uh Raptor at that meeting, so. Any further referrals? All right, um, we'll come back to Mister Traver. Cave Report. Mister Sokolovick, do you have anything for the Cave Report?
I think it was mostly covered with the, we had the day on the hill. And we all, we all went up there. We advocated for more Bill fifteen eleven mostly. We discussed uh special education concerns. We met with several legislators. We're kind enough to come and meet, spend a significant amount of time with them. Hopefully, we could all um get there and do some more advocacy. Because uh, in total, we had about twenty, twenty-one people from Bridgeport advocating for more funding. And unfortunately, by the time you guys come in front of us to advocate, the money's just not there. We need the money to be there. I mean, we could always restore positions if we get the funding. But if we don't get the funding, we're obligated by law to close that twenty-eight million dollars. So like uh Mister Traver said, contact your legislators, advocates, and try to bring his back.
Thank you. Um, we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm gonna start my superintendent report, uh, just giving a little update about the technical assistance team. Uh, it's a four-member state team that's in our district that will, that is actually going to be uh in our district for quite a while. I think they're gonna be here till like December uh of uh the end of this school year, well, middle of the school year in December. Uh, they are currently coming three, two to three days out of the week in the district. They're looking at internal workings of what we, what we do within our district. Uh, in addition to having conversations with uh different aspects or different members of the team. Uh, looking and asking questions about the inner workings of special education, finance, uh, H R, just the day, the daily operations. In addition to that, technical assistance team has just started meeting with um the board executive uh team. Uh, really trying to get the understanding of the um, uh, the board and how they interact with the, with the district and really asking questions about that. So those meetings just started last week, uh, and they will be continuing those meetings this week and next. Just wanted to make sure I put out there, student registration for the twenty-five and twenty-six school year has begun as open as we speak. We encourage all pre-K three and pre-K four students, both in district and external pre-K programs to register. Early registration is crucial to children's development and help ensure proper state allocation of the funding. We're holding in-person early childhood registration events to, to get uh, uh, the students registers as, as well. We're also hosting a kickoff to kindergarten summer program, uh, that's going to be June thirtieth to uh through July twenty-fifth. Uh, this program is designed to prepare incoming kindergarten students with academic, social, emotional, and school readiness skills. To ensure they are ready for kindergarten. Uh, in addition to that, the magnet lottery is uh, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year has closed. Uh, and results will be announced on Wednesday. Uh, data on applicant, data on applicants by school grade in town will, will be provided. Again, uh, with the state testimony, we have done a lot of advocacy for Bridgeport Public Schools. And the funding and also uh, advocating regarding special education funding and processes through the state of Connecticut. Uh, last week, I was also one of the members of, of this, this board and community, uh, and community. That uh did testimony on Senate Bill fifteen eleven. This is a really, really crucial bill, uh, that will again, like uh Mister Traver talked about earlier. Provide additional um, uh, funding for this district to right-size what we do and how we do it moving forward. So I think that's really important, even, even though uh the testimony has closed. I think it's important to still go advocate for fifteen eleven. Uh, again, we also participated in, in the Cave Day on the Hill. Uh, my executive cabinet and I went to Hartford, uh, to really make sure that Bridgeport. I think, I think it's important that as we advocate for those fundings and that they see the faces of Bridgeport. Uh, in uh interacting with all the other legislative advocacy across the state of Connecticut, that we have our voice heard. Uh, and it's been very important to, to, to my team and to this board that we advocate for the dollars that are our, 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 our district and our students and our families deserve. That's very, very important. I am also uh working on an opportunity to bring Representative Leeper and some additional uh state representatives to connect to Bridgeport. To have a deeper conversation. And so I hope, to hope to have those, those states solidified over the next couple of weeks. To bring them into the district in order to have that, you know, impersonal conversation with them regarding the needs of this district. In addition to human resources update, uh, we are, uh, we held uh open teacher interviews. And ha- and has identified at least five candidates who, who we are looking to hire uh for this upcoming school year as well. Some of the upcoming events that are coming uh in the next uh couple of weeks. Uh, April fourteenth, uh, at P T Barnum Housing, uh, from six to eight P M. I will do an open public forum, uh, to try to make sure that we get some of the, the parents in uh, in the P T Barnum Housing. To come out to have a conversation with the superintendent. Uh, again, that's gonna be six P M to eight. And then May the ninth, at Beersley Terrace Housing, from six to, to eight P M. We're gonna have those, those parents to have an opportunity to kinda voice some of the things and concerns that they may have. Uh, again, what we wanted to do with these monthly meetings is to get out into uh the community to, to, to really kind of. Meet the parents where, and as to where they live, so that they have a better feel for coming to, to uh have a conversation with school um leadership. In addition to that, we have three uh facility master plan committee meetings going out to the community as well. Uh, on March the thirty-first at Harding High School, we've changed the time for that meeting to five thirty to eight. Uh, and that's at Harding High School. Uh, on April the second at Central High School. Uh, we're gonna be out uh from six P M to eight P M. And then on uh April the third at Basik High School, uh, six to eight P M. And that's really to kinda give and a little bit open communication conversation with the community about the facility masters, master plan. Uh, again, I wanna make sure that we, we, we highlight that there's a, a lot of district. We, we send out a weekly newsletter. Please make sure that you uh embrace that newsletter. There's a lot of great things happening in the district. And we're gonna make sure that we keep that up front and center. And I'll take any questions.
Mister Sokolovick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you mentioned, you mentioned the state team. I'd like to know if the state consulted with you in making this meeting um tonight from six to eight thirty to get community input on what Bridgeport needs?
They have not. One of, one of the things that has happened is that I, I did reach out to them today on behalf of another board member. Uh, it was, those community meetings were, and dates were, and, and locations were provided by individual community, uh, you know. Organizations. And that's how they, they, they ended up making those times and dates with those community organizations. Uh, but uh, I have given um, uh, Mister Traver an opportunity to reach out to uh that, uh, that rep. Uh, and she's gonna talk with him a little bit more about what we can do in the future as well.
Yeah, cuz I find it really, really concerning that this meeting is taking place right now about what Bridgeport needs. And the location is smack dab in the eastern quadrant, which is suffering the most with school closures. And they would be better off right here because these people right here are telling us what they need. Uh, this meeting is going on until eight thirty. It's at four. Six thirty to eight thirty, and it's taking place at four-four-one Bishop Avenue. These are the people who are, these are the people who are deciding what we do with our money. How we spend our money. These are the people that are forcing us to make these cuts, the people at the state level. So if anybody wants to go over there and tell them what we need, we need money to save jobs. It's a four-four-one Bishop Avenue and it's. And even though the community might have reached out with some dates, we've had our board meetings on the schedule in Hartford. Since December or November. They could have looked. They could have reached out and asked. I find it highly disrespectful that they not only come in here. And dictate what we do with the little money that they don't give us. But to have the audacity to come into the community most impacted by the underfunding of. The state of Connecticut's racist funding schemes funded by property taxes. So if anybody could get over there and speak to what we need in Bridgeport. Four-four-one Bishop Avenue. Tell them we need money. Money solves a lot of the problems. Like Mister Traver said before, not one of us up here wants to make a cut. We're obligated by law. After today. There's going to be twenty, approximately twenty-eight more million dollars in cuts. That's what we're facing. Thank you.
Ms. Casimir?
All right, uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, we're regarding uh the superintendent's report. Um, just two important things to me, Dr. Avery, regarding um your report. Actually, three, but I'll make the third one quick. Um, the, the transition from preschool to kindergarten. What does that look like for Bridgeport Public Schools District when we know that we have, um, you know, uh, preschool, fourth. Uh, four-year-old preschools that are transitioning the, well, not necessarily transitioning that year, but the next year. The transition from preschool to kindergarten. Can you um just give me a quick synopsis of what that looks like?
I'm gonna have Lindsay David comes up to the mic and she can give you a, a quick overview of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, first of all. One more time. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay. Hi, I'm Lindsay Davis. I'm the Director of Early Childhood. And just for clarification, you're asking about what the transition looks like from pre-K four in our. Public school programs to kindergarten in our public school programs?
Correct.
Okay, so um, one of the things that we have done as a department is try and make sure that we have preschool programs in the majority of our public schools. so that that really helps build the foundation from a young age. We do have several schools that have pre K three as well. So students have the ability to potentially be in a preschool that is in their neighborhood school from the age of three years old. So that's something that we've really strived to do and we continue to have conversations about building our programs within the public schools so that they have the ability to build those relationships and start their educational foundation from a very young age. Just so you know, we have thirty seven preschool classrooms that are grant funded throughout the public schools currently. And those are over twenty three locations. So that's one of the ways we really try and build that transition.
Okay, so I'm going to get a little bit more specific with my question. So we have a child who is in preschool that is going to be going to kindergarten. You know, the next school year. Is there some type of program or some type of process where the kindergarten teacher is, you know, kind of having conversations with not each and every parent, but just with those parents? Are they sending out kindergarten expectations about, you know, reading, how important reading is? You know, just whatever the expectations are, are we sending that out to, you know, those children's families that are going to be coming into kindergarten? That's just one example. So that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I think every school is a little bit different. But that's one of the great things about being able to offer preschool programs within our public schools is that parents can start to build those relationships with all of the staff. So they have the ability to connect with the kindergarten teachers. You know, some schools do a transition to kindergarten where they'll have experiences with those teachers before they begin kindergarten the next year. And our curriculum currently for preschool, especially in pre pre K four, we have a component at the end of the year that is solely based on transition to kindergarten. You know, we are focused on developing the whole child, but we do focus on academics and really try and work with the preschool staff to really gain an understanding. And they know that because they're teaching in a public school system, some of them have taught kindergarten before and they know what it looks like. So they do their best to really prepare those children because they really they've they've had these children, the little babies in their room, you know, for a year, sometimes two years. And they want what's best for them and want them to be prepared. So they promote the independence, knowing that the ratio changes drastically from preschool to kindergarten and really make sure they have the foundational skills before they do get to kindergarten.
Okay, so there's a high percentage of kids that are in any given school that are transitioning to kindergarten. So they'll be going to that same school for kindergarten that they're in? Or will some of those kids be going to a different school for kindergarten?
Some do go to a different school, but the majority of our children that are in our public school programs continue in the school that they're at. It is their neighborhood school. That being said, parents do have a choice. So they may not be in preschool where they'll be in kindergarten. Just for convenience, it might be because it's closer to where they work or closer to where childcare is located. But in most cases, for example, I know that there's a family right now that has their child in pre K three, not in the neighborhood school, but in preparation for this coming school year, they have secured a spot in their neighborhood school so that they'll be able to attend pre K four in the neighborhood school to be better prepared for kindergarten.
Okay, you answered that perfectly. Thank you. One more question for Dr. Avery and then I'll
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
Before I ask you this next question, which is related a little bit, I just wanted to just to take the time out to thank you, Dr. Avery, for the hard work that you have been doing so far. Thank you for being so poised and and professional with all of the things that have been, you know, that have fallen in your lap. Thank you for, you know, just being a real professional throughout this and and being patient and being poised. So I just wanted to just to let you know, I know that other board members appreciate you. But me personally, I just want to take the time out to say thank you for being so accessible and for really, you know, proving that that you're for the kids and I appreciate that. So the the last
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. You're welcome. So the last thing I want to ask you is I want to ask you for the opposite transition. We talked about this before, you not you specifically, but when the former superintendent was here. And I don't want it to be lost, but you know, the low functioning students, you know, the the students that are are the ones that, you know, will will pretty much never be able to go out and get a job or go to college or any other transition. I'm talking about the low functioning students. The transition with with asking for like when they leave the school system, I know that there's an important process that needs to be done in order for these parents to advocate to to continue to advocate for these kids. They need to go to probate court, you know, and apply for guardianship. And there's half guardianship and there's something that's called plenary guardianship, which is, you know, responsible for their entire lives, education, housing, et cetera. Are the parents whose kids are aging out? And I know that they can stay in the system until I believe their twenty second birthday. At least that was the last law or what have you. But let's just say we got students that are here until their twenty second birthday. They, you know, aged out, you know. Is the school system, you know, helping the parents make that transition to probate court where they would need to file those papers?
Yes, I'm going to have Michelle McKinley step up to the mic as well. I think it's important that as we develop our, you know, transform our special education programs in the district, we are looking at trying to get more input from parents. And that is why we have created a parental task force to really kind of seek, you know, parents, you know, that are having difficulties with, you know, with any aspect of of their child's educational career within our schools to really pinpoint some of those things to try to fill some of those voids of those parents. And so and trying to make sure that the transition, and that's a very difficult thing for any parent to be able to do, is have to transition their kids out of high school into a a day program, another facility program, you know, state program. So we have to be able to equip them to better understand that because there's a lot of integral pieces that goes into play with that. And so I'm going to have Ms. McKinley kind of give you just a little brief perspective of how we're doing that in the district and how we're going to improve upon that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Dr. Avery answered it. But we start the year before their eighteenth birthday. So by age seventeen, we start discussing transition of of rights, transfer of rights. And regardless of a child's ability or disability, those rights are transferred unless parents have that guardianship or a power of attorney in place. And we do provide information to parents as to how they can seek that. For those students that do continue with us until they are at twenty two, we do have a variety of transition programs within the district. We have programs actually at three of our high schools. We have a transition academy. And then we also have partnerships with other transition programs within the state or within our Fairfield County boundaries. Before students are exited out, we do work with parents to ensure that they are aware of the services that's available to them in the community, available through the state. And we provide that information to them to be able to access those services. And we provide support during those years of eighteen to twenty two to ensure that they are accessing those services. Honestly, we try to provide information to parents to connect with disability resources early on when they are initially identified because sometimes the waiting list can be fourteen to twenty years long. So we actually start that process far earlier than the age of seventeen.
So it's eighteen. Exactly, yeah. Okay, yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Mr. Trayber?
Yes, I I just wanted to say that I believe you can still submit testimony.
For fifteen eleven?
So even if you missed the hearing, you can still submit testimony late. And it certainly doesn't hurt to write to your state reps and senators under any circumstance and submit whatever you have to say to the committee chairs.
Madam Chair, to add to what Mr. Trayber said, we have sample testimony that we can provide. So if anyone is wanting to make testimony to 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 upload to the site, please reach out to myself or to Communications Department and we can help you guys do that. The more people from Bridgeport that will advocate guys, the the better chances we're going to be able to have our voices heard. So and what I'm going to do as well, executive directors, we can send a message out to principals tomorrow to say, we need you, we need your testimony and we'll let them know how to go and do it and how to submit it. We can send that link to them as well because I think that's important for us to be able to do together collectively.
Yeah, I I I don't think there's any magic formula. You really need to speak from the heart about what you care about. Y'all know what we've been through. So whatever it is that you're angry about, whatever it is you care about, what I heard tonight is what they need to hear. They don't want to see anything cut. We can't, we can't cut anything else. And we really want to see our children get the same opportunities as the children everywhere else. And that's what we want.
Ms. Mr. Mary Jimenez?
I have two points or questions. The first question is about, I realize we have to balance out the budget by June thirtieth of this year, right? Is there an opportunity? We have great minds in the room, people who are in all these buildings that the B O E helps pay for. It can we do a survey of, hey, can you identify your top ten areas where we can cut potentially? I feel like it's much easier to cut expenditures at the schools when the principals are involved in it. It's it's still going to hurt, but it might hurt less. The second item I was going to suggest is, so we have these great samples that you just chatted about supporting bill fifteen eleven. Can we issue out a press release or something on Parents Square? Having parents also advocate, not just the principals, I think that would be great, but also the parents. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Trayber, do you have anything on the Instruction and Support Services Committee? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Put your mic on. Thank you. We'll go back to you.
Dr. Avery, you mentioned that you were planning to invite some of the representative to come over and have a a sit down. Is that going to be with the community also? Are you going to do something open or is that you're only going to meet with your executive? No, it's going to be with with the board, the delegate. I mean, I want awesome. It's going to be a community perspective because we want to kind of advocate for some. Leeper is part of the Special Education Committee advocating for the change within special ed and the access cost additions to for. So it's going to be, I'm going to, I want you guys to be part of that conversation along with delegates, whoever else we we need to invite to to the table to have that conversation as well. So that's coming. So that's kind of what I'm working on right now. So.
Actually, Leeper's co-chair of the Education Committee. So she's like really important. So it would be good to have her here. And Tim, that would be all of our delegation here in Bridgeport for the parents to contact and speak to. The ISS, the Instruction and and Support Services Committee will be meeting on Wednesday. We'll be continuing our discussion about some field trips. And we have a discussion, an ongoing discussion about in-school and out-of-out-of-school suspensions, which we had a very constructive meeting last week about that. And so we want to continue that discussion. And right now I'm drawing a blank about the rest of the agenda, but the agenda, the meeting is Wednesday at five thirty in room three oh five.
Thank you. Any referrals, Mr. Benahan?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any referrals?
I remembered the other thing, which was the discussion about the P PAC and P T S O expenditures before the year expires for them so that we make sure that everybody uses the money that they've been allocated. So we're going to have a discussion about that, too. Thank you.
Any referrals? Mr. Benahan?
This is for Mr. Dr. Avery. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that you do you, I know you meet with the principals and everything. And I want to say thank you for that because that's what the principals and assistant principal want. They listen to you, they can understand what's going on. Sometimes I know and I understand they they don't feel that trust. They don't feel that, you know, they scare because what's happened in the past and past and past and past, they always have the same thing. I want you to understand, you know, do they listen to you and then you listen to them? Like I tell them, you guys are very open, you know, he will listen to you guys. All the principal there are listening, you know, via ritual, you know, and here in the present, you know, they have this thing, he's not perfect. He's not perfect. We are not perfect. You guys are not perfect. I know he tried the best he can. And the good things that I always say with a good communication is aggressive, successful. You know, things get, you know, little by little, he's doing the baby step, trying to organize and fix a lot of things. You know, it's a mess. And I don't feel the mess from last year. I feel that he's facing mess from years back, that board members, they know what happened. So he tried the best, but I want to say thank you for that, that you're trying to open your your mind, listen all the board members, sorry, principals. And I know the principal, they will come to you because that's what I tell them, go to them, listen to him, explain what's going on because of good communication. I know things can get, can, you know, better. I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think one of the important pieces, I want to make sure that the community, my staff, administration, teachers. I've been, I've I've tried to strategically map out how to address certain things. And it's been three months. I've tried to lay it out there and do things in a in a in a manner that's going to be conducive to everybody. And I can tell you, it's been, it's been, it's been tough. And so I've tried to maximize my my time, you know, my efforts, my concentration on certain things. You know, with the state coming in and trying to juggle those those meetings and figure out how that works, you know. But I I I feel like I have a better grip on things. So moving forward, I'm trying to make sure that I can have conversations with teachers. I I I own the opportunity of not embracing administrators well enough. You know, you talked about communication and not giving them communication in a timely manner was is is something that I I I I take ownership of and I will fix that administrators. I think that's important. And in the big scheme of things, things are are becoming a lot clearer. We're trying to lay out things the way it needs to happen. And I think you have to embrace the understanding of of, and I have to do a better job of communicating that. So moving forward, that's going to be a priority of mine. And I think hopefully all different aspects of this school community will have a better understanding of what we we need to do together moving forward. So I appreciate that.
We're going to move on to new business. Mr. Benahan, you wanted a point of privilege?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot to tell you at the beginning, but this is a point of privilege. Two big leaders here from Bridgeport. Then I know they very support students, parents and staff, special scholarship and everything. I would like to get a minute of silence for one of the big leaders and then Miss Frankin Colon. He just passed away. They really call him in Wepa. And the other one was Mr. Valentino. He's another guy, a gentleman that he support a lot of students in support, a lot of things in Bridgeport Public School. I was witness every time I need him for something in the schools or for family, something like that. These two gentlemen help him a lot. So the first one is the Flying, uh, Flying Colon. He was a former president of the Puerto Rican parade and Mr. Valentino, sheriff of Bridgeport. And he's an amazing person, so I would like to get a minute's silence, please. But also I believe we received an email. But also, I believe we received an email, I want to, want to let you know that I'm, I believe her name is Rita Fongelli. They, she, we received a very sad news, so all these three people, can I get a minute of silence, please?
I'll have a moment of silence.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah. All right. We're going to on new business. The first is discussion and possible approval of the extension to the CREC agreement for the 24-25 Advanced Alternate Route to Certification and SPED agreement. I believe Mr. Brosnan is going to speak on that. Okay. And Mr. Cosella? No?
Hi, good evening. Just here to raise the, re-raise the CRAK agreement that we had last school year to cross endorse our current schoolteachers into special education. We sent out one interest survey, and we had over 20 responses of currently certified elementary and secondary teachers who are taking the opportunity to serve our community in a new way by cross endorsing into special education. The program consists of a one-year non-credit-bearing cross endorsement. All, all of these teachers would be eligible, under the Durational Shortage Area Permit, to begin the 25-26 school year as a special education teacher. So their service hours count, and the positions are filled with a certified special education teacher. The cost of the program is $9,950 per candidate. And we've requested that, as a part of the MOU and the promissory note, that any individual would sign who participates in the program, that Bridgeport will cover the cost of the tuition, extend the gratitude of a two-step pay bump to the individual, and that that individual would remain in a special education role for four years, beginning in the 25-26 school year. We've had some tremendous success with the program over the past several years. All of the candidates who were enrolled in it have completed it and are currently serving in a special education role, with the exception of one individual who went to another district. And as was lined out by the promissory note, repaid the, the money that was owed back to the city.
I'll take questions from the board members. Ms. Medina?
Thank you. I know during our meeting, we had a few discussions concerning the cost and how we're going to be doing things, but one of the amendment that we would have, we were looking towards was getting clarity on that MOU, clarity on that, that when will that agreement of the three years, but we were looking at to see if we can extend it to a total of four years after completion of the program. That way, kind of like what our CFO said, you know, we can get a better bang for our, our money thinking ahead. Where are we with that MOU and the status of moving it to a four-year agreement after completion of the course?
So, thank you. So the current MOU is three years after the certification, so it's a total of four years. They work one year as a DSAAP, and then the next three years as, under the MOU. To adjust the MOU, we'd have to negotiate that with the union, which we have not been able to do yet, because it's a, it's an agreement with the union, we'd have to negotiate that. We can absolutely do that and see how the union, union feels about it. I don't think it's that much of a heavy lift, because the union understands the dire situation facing the district with special ed. But we couldn't give you an answer on that tonight, as we'd have to negotiate that with the union.
Ms. Calvert?
Oh yeah. How many, how many new positions are we talking about? 10 or 20? Because there was some...
Well, well, the positions exist, so they are currently staffed by Kelly substitutes. So the positions are there. These are just, well, I think what's been proposed is up to 20 of our teachers moving into those positions as certified teachers through the program.
And is, is that including the ones that are already in the pipeline for last year? No. So it's 20 new positions at a cost of $10,000 per, so $200,000 in tuition plus whatever.
Correct.
Thank you. The only reason I'm asking, this is a great program, great investment. But we're starving, and I'm also seeing the other end of this, where we're going to have to find a light cut on the other side of this equation to make up for the expenditure. That's what I have.
Any questions? Mr. Traver?
Yeah, I have nothing. I think it's a great idea. I, it's just you're not, what's the projected cost of the two steps?
I think that's a Mr. Niquel question.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. I think the best thing is, I kind of did an analysis of, the cost analysis of cross-training a regular teacher into a SPED teacher. They can put it up on the board, I did hand it out to all the board members. If you don't have a copy, I could give you a copy, but I'll go through the whole analysis, so everybody will understand the whole scenario that's being played there.
All you got to do is tell me the number.
If you want to look at the board, that's fine. If you have the spreadsheet, that's fine. If you don't have the spreadsheet, I do have another set-up spreadsheet. So pretty much what it is, the intent is to recruit regular teachers and cross-train them to be special ed teachers. And everyone knows how difficult or how hard or how scarce it is to recruit or hire special education teachers in the district, in Bridgeport, not just Bridgeport District. It's a regional problem. So Bridgeport has taken a very proactive approach by really giving an incentive to our regular teachers, which is to move a teacher from their current step and give them a two-step box, for them to go into the SPED program, the special education program, which is accredited by the State of Connecticut. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's 18-month program. Is it 18? 14-month program. Right, I stand corrected. 14-month program. They will become certified Board of Education teachers. What it means is that the district does not have to make up any hours for that particular student that they're teaching, for those 14 months of teaching as special ed teachers while they're in training. So the credit hours they're providing to the student are all counted towards special education teaching, no make-up hours, before they even graduate.
My question was not that complicated.
I know, I'm just, I know.
It's a simple question. If, if they're going to move up two steps, and Michael said, we've identified 20 teachers.
Let's look at the board.
And we know what the two steps are, we can project the two steps.
Let's look at the board.
We can at least approximate it.
Okay, let's look at, let's look at the board.
I'm not going to hold you to it, Nestor.
Going to, it's up on the board, or it's up also on your spreadsheet. Going to two steps for a bachelor's degree teacher is $3,700 per teacher. For 10 teachers, it's $37,000 a year. Make sense?
Thank you.
$700 a teacher?
$3,700.
$3,700?
A year. That's including the Medicare, the cost of Medicare.
For a master's, it's $6,138?
Master's is seven, after the $6,138.
And so of the 20 teachers, Michael, who have exhibited an interest, how many are bachelors? How many are masters?
Again, let me, if we can go through this spreadsheet, I think we want to. But again, you cannot pick and choose master's degree. That's why I gave the scenario of bachelor's degree, master's degree. We can assume that five are going to be masters, five are going to be undergraduate. You can blend it any way you want. Add up the difference, average the difference of the two categories. You can't tell who is going to be what degree.
I, I'm not arguing. I'm for the program. I'm only trying to put a dollar figure on the cost, a realistic dollar figure. And Michael stood up and said, we have over 20 teachers who have indicated an interest in the program in his initial presentation, which would suggest that we know approximately how many have bachelors and how many have masters. So we should be able to,
We have that for you, sir.
approximate the cost.
Dom?
I, I don't have a sophisticated chart as, as Nestor, but I can tell you, out of the people that have applied, the total cost and salary difference is $167,603.
Okay, so we have $200,000 plus $167,000, so approximately $367,000. Approximately. I'm not, I'm not trying to pin anybody down. Again, it's a great investment. We need special ed teachers. We got it. It's a worthwhile expenditure of money.
There's no point going through it.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Their motion? Put your microphone, please.
I move to approve the extension of the CRAK agreement for the 24-25 Advanced Alternative Route to Certification in the SPED agreement.
Second by Mr. Benahan. Is there any further debate? Seeing none, take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain only because of the addition to the budget. Not down to the bottom yet, but I think it's a great program, and I'm glad it passes.
Yep. Passes. Thank you, Mr. Brosnan. Hancock Research Presentation is the next item on the agenda.
I think we have representative from Hanover online, but we have, there he is.
Two online, yes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. My name is Dr. Matt Regone. I'm with Hanover Research. So tonight, my colleague Julie Shannonfield and I would like to give you a brief summary of how Bridgeport has collaborated with Hanover this year to try and make progress towards several important priorities. The priorities listed here, can you guys see my screen? Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. So the priorities listed here that you're seeing are clearly not your only priorities, but these are some that we've been able to provide some research-based guidance for as you guys work towards some very important goals. This presentation will summarize what we did this year and reference the reports that we've delivered to Bridgeport, and all that, all of which have, have been shared with the board. All the research projects and reports have been shared with the board. Before I get into the research, I'd like to give Julia, who is your relationship director, an opportunity to tell you a little bit about Hanover Research in general, and the services we provide.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, and thank you, everyone, for the time tonight. Just to give you a little bit of an overview about Hanover and how we've been working with the district in terms of our services. So we are a custom research firm, and the district had two research cues with us. And what that means is that throughout the course of the year, we are able to have two research projects going on at any point. And behind Matt, we have a team of over 200 researchers on our team, specialized in different areas. So we can support districts through mixed methodology approach, including secondary reports, like best practices, benchmarking reports. We can do survey design, do it from the ground up. We can analyze surveys that the district has done. We also have a qualitative team that can do in-depth interviews, as well as a quantitative team that can do data analysis for the district. So we work with the district to see what areas they want supported, and then Matt works with the team in terms of what are the research questions we need answered? What are the best ways to go about that? So giving a lot of flexibility in terms of the topics that we can cover, but also the ways that we support and get the information for the district. Within the membership, Bridgeport also had access to that last wheel on there, which is our Hanover digital portal. So this includes over 1,500 syndicated reports. So while we're working with the district on specific initiatives, this gives the administrative and leadership team a chance to benefit off of the research work that we're doing for our other members as well. It also includes interactive dashboards, webinars are in there, and as well as some toolkits. And then another service that I want to highlight, that we've spoken with the district about, but haven't done in partnership or collaboration with the district yet, is our Educator Learning Center, which is our asynchronous professional development platform. So it really allows districts to maximize what type of professional development they want different teachers to receive, and how they're going to do it. So we have over 13 suites right now, everything from multicultural teaching to supporting specialized student populations, to science of reading. And we also have an implementation advisor that can help support the district's usage of that. So that's just kind of a quick overview, which will tie into what Matt's going to cover in terms of the specific projects we did to support the initiatives of the district.
Thanks, Julie. So what I want to be able to share with you tonight is to show you how Hanover has collaborated with Bridgeport. We've delivered eight formal projects to the district. But this is only, as Julie mentioned, all of those wheels that you saw, it's only a little bit part of the collaboration that we've had with the executive team. Beyond the time and resources that go into creating the research and delivering the reports, we've also met monthly with various members, including Dr. Avery, Dr. Sackey, and a few other members of his executive team to consult with their priorities and flesh out how the research can support their, their daily work. And, and in general, with the objective of moving students along that continuum and really supporting students in everything that they do, social, emotional, mental health, special education, et cetera. So we've also presented to this board several times, I think this is our third time, and, and several committees, and we stand ready to attend future meetings and answer any questions or present any additional information that you guys want. We also contributed our expertise, expertise to support the district's special education grant submission last fall, which was really a heavy lift for the district, and we, we were glad to support submission of that, that application last fall, which took a lot of time on, on your team's part. So we were happy to do that. The priorities you see here, again, not necessarily all your priorities, but it's where we saw the need, where research could make progress towards some goals here. So, and, and only with research can the district be assured that you're getting the resource alloc, or sort of allocating your resources to meet these priorities, and you're being responsible and using the, the resources that you have effectively to make these, make these steps towards improving student achievement and student, student outcomes. For example, benchmarking teacher compensation in Connecticut. I'll go through a little bit of, a little bit of an example of how we did that. That's just one example of how research can help you make really critical decisions to examine your resource allocation, to be maybe a little bit more efficient. Maximizing special education has been a huge priority for the district. There was an Arizona State University study a while back that proposed some recommendations for Bridgeport. Specifically, they studied Bridgeport and made recommendations. As a result of that, Hanover has been working towards, working to get researchers, research to address those recommendations and bring those recommendations to fruition. I'll talk a little bit about that. We've also worked to, to support the SEL team, as they analyze the current state of each school's climate and culture. This work has included some pretty significant research-based practices for maximizing your core of counselors and, and other support folks. And finally, research is always available to, to the district. As Julie mentioned, we have a research library with thousands and thousands of reports. But culling through all those thousands of articles, your, your district leaders don't have time to do that. So we serve as sort of librarians of that, of that research library, and are able to provide district leaders with various actual research reports that, that give you research-based guidance on, on any research front that, or any priority that, that you have. So what I'd like to do is go through each of these big priorities and just give you a little bit of an example of, of how we worked with Bridgeport to support work and progress towards them. So this is just a quick snippet example. This is not the whole research report, but it's an example from the research report that we did on teacher compensation in Connecticut. We did this in several stages. We did this, We did this with peer districts, and you can see on the screen here all the districts that we studied and looked at their, the salary, salary distribution of each district and compare that to the average. So on this screen, you can see the average. In Connecticut, you can see the averages of some of the bigger districts that are on the right side. Just gives you a, a little bit of it, an example of, of the information that we're able to provide the executive team as they prepare to make really critical decisions. So the full report includes a similar analysis for district-level leaders, such as directors and assistant superintendents. So it's just one example of the things that we can provide to, to give the executive team some, some information, so they're not making decisions sort of in the blind. Research typically, any researcher will tell you, kind of begets more research. So good research reveals additional new questions that we didn't know were there or didn't have the knowledge yet to ask. So in each of our reports that we, that we deliver and in a very comprehensive document that we provide called the Membership Action Plan, we're always thinking about what are the next steps. So for example, in terms of resource allocation, we recommend Bridgeport continue to explore how it allocates resources through a formal program evaluation research. So this is just a list of possible ways that we can continue to collaborate with Bridgeport. So you're maximizing your fiduciary responsibilities and really making a critical examination of any money that you're spending on programs perhaps that aren't giving you a return on investment. We can provide vendor scans so you, so you know that you're, that the money that you need to spend on programs is not going to be wasted. And at the end here, you see that every project sequence, we, we like to develop a, a final report or a capstone report that summarizes all the research that we've done to the point, to that, in that project sequence. So the objective here really is to give Bridgeport enough information to go through all of its programs, and, and Hanover does this for you, goes through all your programs, cuts the programs that you're not, that you're not using, or they're not giving you a return on investment, and in the long run, saving you money by, by really taking a critical look at, at each program. Special education, I've heard it tonight, we've heard it before. Dr. Avery, Dr. Sackey have spoke passionately about the need to support special education with us. And so we engaged in a lot of research on special education and delivered that to, to your executive team, and you have a lot of these reports at your disposal as well. So as I, as I mentioned, Arizona State University conducted a study of, of Bridgeport's special education program. They developed a lot of recommendations. Bridgeport partnered with Hanover as a way to carry out some additional research based on those recommendations. So for example, misidentifying students as special education when there are a lot of other factors for, that could be creating or the cause for their low performance or, or behavior in classrooms is a common national problem. This is not just a Bridgeport problem. Educators around the country tend to label students as special education when there might be other things going on to explain what's happening with them. So this misidentification takes resources away from those special education students that really need it and doesn't address the root causes for those misidentified students, which in turn takes a whole different set of resources to address. So if you get special education identification correct, in the long run, it saves your special education team money, it saves them resources, and it allows them to concentrate all of their skills sets to the special education students that absolutely need it. It streamlines resources and improves student outcomes across the board. So in a series of research projects, Hanover shared a recently conducted and, an analysis of, of the best practices around tools that, that teachers and special education specialists can use. And we, we created a toolkit that the district and school-based leaders can use to train staff and how to get to the root causes of, of the challenges facing students. We also conducted a comprehensive study of secondary research on the challenges of special education identification, and improving that process can improve special education service, service delivery in general. So the recommendations in these, in these reports include things like conducting a needs assessment, so you know where the staff are in their understanding of things like cultural inclusiveness, implicit bias, trauma-sensitive practices. Recommendations also include monitoring progress towards goals to reduce disproportionality by collecting a lot of student outcome data. And by disproportionality, we mean, along with that misidentification becomes that students of color, students of low socioeconomic conditions are disproportionately labeled as special ed because the, because of the sort of flawed process. So this toolkit and some of the research that we've provided should help to eliminate the, or, or kind of fix the process. And maybe getting additional support from external organizations or community partners to provide the district with some additional resources in guidance and special ed service delivery is, is something that we can do to address these disproportionality and improve special education service delivery. So one of the things I, I, I mentioned this previously, we supported Bridgeport with a special education grant application through our access to research and our own expertise in this area. We were able to contribute a lot of information and explain how research can monitor progress towards the stated goals that we set out in, in the application and describe a rationale for how assessments can support the special education service delivery. So if approved, the grant would expect research in several areas, including the projects that you see there suggested at the bottom, to track progress towards some goals. So all of which Hanover is positioned to carry out for you. It's not something that you all have to, have to do on your own. So just like the resource allocation, we always, always are looking for ways to continue the research in special education. Some of these recommendations include data analysis. We want to understand special education student outcomes, their behavior, academic, social, emotional outcomes, as compared to other students and track these outcomes over time. So you can understand the impact these, the actions that you're taking to improve special education delivery are having on, on students. A lot of kind of cash-strapped districts can't hire research teams, they can't do this data analysis on their own. So Hanover can step in and conduct that research at a fraction of the cost. So conducting in-depth interviews is, is another example where we can talk to special education staff, families, so we can get a kind of fuller, richer pitch, picture of how everyone is feeling about the services and resources that they're getting. We really want to kind of understand more in-depth at a qualitative level how people are, are feeling about the services and resources. We want to be able to conduct annual surveys of everyone involved in special education so you can track these perceptions over time. You want to be able to see where the resources that you're applying to special education improvement are having an impact. And the services, the surveys, the in-depth interviews and data analysis can do that for you. And then we want to continue to look at peer and exemplar districts. There's always really good ideas coming up all, all the time with districts as they experiment and try different things in special, special education service delivery, and you don't want to miss out on that. You want to know what, and, and learn from other districts' mistakes and, and successes and, and be able to harness that and be on the cutting edge of, of special education. So climate and culture is another big priority that we, that we helped out with. We conducted an examination of different counseling models to support the district's need to understand all the options available to it, to make it, to make better choices or better use of counseling resources. So rather than a big thirty-page report, in this instance, what we did was, we created an infographic, which is one of the different types of reports we can do. We can always do big, you know, thirty-page reports, but sometimes you need quick information. You need to be able to communicate that information quickly. So that's what we did in this case. So you can turn around the information very quickly to those who need it quickly, quickly and who need it most. Like full reports, the infographic is still rooted in research, but this one summarized the research on the impacts of effective school counseling programs and the need to invest in it and effective research-based strategies in K-12 school counseling. So the other thing that we did with social, emotional, learning and, and climate, I think that this is the first thing we did with, with Bridgeport at the beginning of, of our relationship. We worked with the SEL team and the cultural and climate team and helped them kind of get a picture of each school's climate and culture. So this was a pretty intensive data collection that your team and my team collaborated on. And we conducted the analysis of the data that they helped collect. So we found that the district as a whole demonstrates a really strong commitment to fostering positive school climates. At many schools, there are examples of PBIS, restorative justice, SEL, they were all on display in schools. And school climate initiatives were also in evidence through staff support, and clearly staff were motivated to make positive climate a priority in each school. Some schools were exemplars in displaying or having visual evidence in their schools regarding parent engagement and community outreach. So this report shared a lot of exemplars and made some recommendations for other schools to kind of implement, to model what some of the schools were doing and kind of creating a, a dialogue across schools. So your SEL and, and climate culture teams have some of these good ideas in their bank, and they can promote these good ideas across the district. It's also, it was also noted that while schools are clearly committed to fostering positive school climate, the, there was a noted lack of district-wide consistency across the effort, so, across SEL and climate. So in other words, schools were doing different things and there was not one coordinated thing rolled out. Now, I know last year was, we did this at the beginning of last year, and a lot of things have changed, and a lot of new efforts were on their way to kind of actually do that at a district-wide level. So we think it's important to kind of follow up this research with, with an update to examine the new changes, the, the changes that might have happened with new initiatives. So one of the other things we did was, and this is just another, another example of a quick thing that we can do. This doesn't take long to create an annotated bibliography. It just provides your staff with a lot of research in a quick report that you can access and learn from on a lot of different topics. So this is what I was talking about when we can be the curator of, of a large library of resources for you. So this is just one example of a quick project that we did to give your team a lot of information on, on school counseling. So again, follow-up research for climate and culture. We recommend that, this is climate and culture, and SEL is something that you need to monitor continually because it changes very quickly, and it's very reactive to initiatives. So if you're going to have like a check and connect program, or if you're gonna institute a district-wide SEO program, you want to monitor the progress and the impact that that's had, that, that has on, on student engagement, on family engagement. So we recommend surveying families and students and staff. We recommend annually, we recommend in-depth interviews to give you a deeper and richer data set on why people are sort of answering the questions they're answering in surveys. You want to kind of know why things are happening, not just what's happening. You, district likely want to know more about how student outreach can be done in a, in a much more economically and efficient way. So we recommend best practices, reports on that. There's lots of good information out there that we can help you get. So that pretty much covers what we've been doing with, with the research. One of the other big priorities is kind of like this catch-all, that we've created a resource guide for your team, so they can, they can apply research to these other research priorities that we've heard the district team talk about. So again, those big four buckets are, are just the big buckets that we've been able to contribute research to, but there's lots of other things out there that research can help the district accomplish. Cultural, culturally responsive teaching, teacher capacity, you know, professional learning, tier-one instruction, things like that. And things that you see on this slide are everything that, are, are a lot of things that districts find research very helpful in directing and creating some action plans for. So this is a summary of research recommendations referenced in, in the report, all in one place. So in, in this presentation, so this is just sort of a summary of everything that I've talked about and how we might continue doing research for you. None of this happens automatically, you're in a vacuum. Any research plan should include ongoing collaboration with the district. So we're giving you reports that you can actually use, and the research plan should be adept and flexible, nimble enough to pivot as the district's needs change and as things kind of come up as priorities or, or priority shift. So this partnership is really reflected in what I had referenced before, this big Membership Action Plan. It's a living document. We update it continually as we talk to the district leaders, and through that plan, the district sees a really full continuum of work and how the research supports all of your priorities. So this is just a, a summary of how we might conduct an instructional audit, support human resources, and monitor family engagement, different methodologies that we would employ to do that. So that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Benahan?
Simple question. How come this wasn't in our portal, in our thing? I know it's coming from the committee, but I feel the other board members don't have it, so they can go review and check?
It's in our portal. It's in our portal.
Yeah, for this meeting?
It is in our portal. Yes.
Hey, been asked a few times, any emails in our, in office today?
You have to put your mic on. But it's in our portal.
I'm sorry, I did, I did, I had looked into it. I've been asking, and I've been checking with other board members, see if it was in our portal. I've never saw it in our portal, this, this one for today's meeting under today's date. But respectfully, I'll, I'll, I'll yield that and just say, you know, goes beyond. But that being said, I do have a question, and I would just, I thought today we were gonna get to know some of the projects that you guys already have completed, and we were gonna have a presentation on that. So I'm kind of like surprised today, but I thought that's what was, I was looking forward to hearing, and the work and where we can save, what programs are working or not working, that stuff, the projects that you guys worked with the district. But I'm just wondering, are we getting that?
Ben, here. That wasn't my understanding. My understanding was that we were gonna give, you know, from the committee, we talked about some of the projects that was done, making sure that we, we, he went through the whole scheme, spectrum of the, of the projects that was presented throughout the year. We provided every single board member a copy of all of those. Some board members wanted hard copies of them. We provided hard copies of, of the project for them. Our team has been utilizing these projects since the inception of working with Hanover a year ago. We use it to, you know, substantiate the projects and the, the areas of focus that we needed to, to do. When you look at the climate, the climate perspective, the counseling piece, the special ed toolkit piece, these are the things and practices that we use to better the district. And so that's kind of what we've been doing. But what they, what they do, what they've done with this presentation is to give the board an overview of all of those things, and then an, an opportunity for you to look into those and read through some of those documents, because it's all based on Bridgeport. You know, so it's just, again, it's a comprehensive, they're very, research is very comprehensive and very, you know, tedious to, to pull together, but it gives you a focal point, gives my team a focal point of how we do the business a little different, based on the norms around the country and, and around our, the, the Connecticut, other, other Connecticut school districts that also uses Hanover for their research projects. And then we can tap into their database of research projects that they've done with the other districts. One of the things that they're working with me on the side is, is how do we compare funding-wise with others' schools in Fairfield County, in Connecticut, when it comes to salaries of administrators? I'm getting ready to bring some of that research back to the board as we renegotiate what we're going to do with our current administrative staff that are without contracts as we speak. So those are the things that I can't just get from random school districts. Some of that information is public, but the detailed pieces of what they've done with other districts they work with, they have the data sources with them, they can provide those data sources. So again, it was just more of giving you the comprehensive overview of all the things and all the projects they've done this year. And that's part of the contract as well, just making sure that you guys were aware.
Great, so I'll tell you what I'm going to be doing towards Hanover and for you, Mr. Avery. I'm going to be going back to those minutes and I'm going to build, bring some questions that I had concerning what my recollection is from that prior meeting that they were going to possibly bring in, some of the things that they think that took some nice notes. Fortunately, I didn't make it back home to collect them, but I thought that's what we were getting. So I would have had those questions because I had my notes saying this is what we're going to get today. But I'll research myself and then I'll give you an outlook. Thank you.
Mr. Traber, then Ms. Baptiste Perez. Mr. Traber?
My recollection of what we said at the last meeting was that we were going to get a report of the special ed packet at this meeting. And at that meeting, looking at the material that we were presented, most of what we have been given by Hanover was produced in the last few months. There was not a lot of material produced until the last few months. So.
So we've been, we've been, we've had a relationship with you all for a whole year. We've been doing projects all year long.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But the material.
So it hasn't been just in the last couple of months?
Presented to us was only, most, the bulk of the material that was presented to us was material that was delivered in the last few months.
They were gathering the research, I'm assuming?
So I guess it would be important to me to see what was delivered to the district when.
We're going to go Ms. Baptiste Perez.
I just wanted to clarify to the point Mr. Bennigan brought up. The, these packets were not provided in our portal until about 5:00 PM this evening. So there wasn't sufficient time to go through all the materials.
They were in the committee packet from March 5th, so we've had the materials and they were uploaded today, four hours before the meeting.
They were uploaded and it's timestamped by Olivia, forty-nine minutes. Yeah, I'm part of the regular board, so I want to check it in the regular board portal. I shouldn't be having the fish for documents, thank you.
Well done. Any further questions about the presentation, Mrs. Sikolovick?
Oh, yes, um, when does Hanover's contract expire?
Ms. Dr. Avery, the contract?
I'm thinking it's, hey Matt, could you, can you clarify that for me? I think it's.
Yeah, I can, I can join in. The contract ran from March 1st of last year till the end of February. So we are just reporting on the work that we have done and we've been talking with Dr. Avery in terms of what that partnership could look like moving forward with the flexibility of our membership.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you guys for presenting.
Thanks for having us.
Next item on the agenda, thank you. They're all, is it for Dr. Avery?
Yeah, Avery, Dr. Avery.
I don't have, I don't have the contract in front of me, but I was going to bring it up in your committee for consideration for next school year, again, for consideration.
The next item on the agenda is discussion of possible action to suspend the bylaw on ninety-three-ten for the purpose of immediate implementation of the following updated revised policies, the health medical records policy, P fifty-one-twenty-five-point-eleven, and the non-discrimination policy and notice, P zero-five-twenty-one A.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Sikolovick, second by Mr. Bennigan. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Mr. Medina abstained. The next item on the agenda is discussion of possible approval of the following updated revised policies, the health medical records policy, P fifty-one-twenty-five-point-eleven, and the non-discrimination policy and notice, P zero-five-twenty-one. There going to be a presentation on that?
Dr. Sackey's going to present.
Good evening.
Dr. Sackey is presenting. What's that? Go ahead, Dr. Sackey, you have one.
Okay, good evening, hope everyone is well. Thank you for the opportunity to share on these policies, similar to what was just shared by our board chair. We have two policies that I'll be sharing today that were shared at the the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting last week. The first one I will be discussing would be the health medical records policy. Our current policy is number fifty-one-fifty-one. We are going to be keeping this policy, but under the section that states health records, we'll be adding the K policy, Students' Health Medical Records, policy number five-one-two-five. This will be included under the health record section of our current policy. We've also removed the name Lizette Early and put it instead, School Health Supervisor. This was a recommendation made by one of our committee members. So that has been updated in the current document that should be uploaded. The change in the document itself includes specific language around the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of nineteen ninety-six, that's HIPAA. It also includes language around the Family Educational Rights Privacy Act, FERPA. Included will also be a sample HIPAA compliant authorization for release of health information form. So they gave us some samples as well that we didn't have in our old policies that are HIPAA compliant in terms of releasing information. So those documents are part of your packet. Any questions about the health record form?
So again, just to make, Madam Chair?
Mr. Medina?
Thank you. Through the chair, just wanted to make sure that every board member in the read the only thing that was changed or let's say revised is exactly what Mr. Sackey said. But I want to make sure that it's clear that instead of having the person that's on the role for the, for that, it was a name before. So instead, what we decided to do is to change it to be stated as the position. So it's a nursing supervisor. That way, year after year, we don't, if that role, that person is not in the district no longer, it's just that person that took that position over. And I think that is common to both. That's the only thing that was revised, and I want to make sure because I've made some inquiries about that, that's the only thing. And also for the board to know and Madam Chair is, that what I've requested through communication is that whenever there is a revision like this, that we will have kind of like a black underline what was added and red line on what was redacted. Let's say that we all have it clear what was changed or not changed, instead of just having a document like we have today. So I made that recommendation through other things and they were very, you know, thumbs up about making sure.
And yeah, just to add to what Mr. Medina was saying, our actual policy, we're not changing our actual policy. We're adding to our policy because there's other things in our policy that was not in the K policy. That's why I said we're not, we're keeping our policy, but under the health record section specifically, we're adding the K policy to there.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Traber?
Can I repeat what I asked a moment ago? What is the difference between items C and D?
C, we're suspending the bylaw, so we are not going to do the first read.
Oh, it's just a suspend. Okay, thank you.
Automatically implement this after we voting on it.
So it's the exact same thing that we're doing, we're suspending to do this and we're suspending the bylaws to do D?
Yes.
And D is what we have on these pages here, which is what they've just been discussing. Thank you, I'm a little slow tonight, I appreciate your tolerance.
Any questions about the policy? Anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve updating the revised policies, health and medical records policy, P five-one-two-five-point-one-one for immediate implementation.
Second?
That was moved by Mr. Sikolovick, second by Mr. Medina. Any further debate? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Ms. Baptiste Perez abstains.
I abstain as well.
And Ms. Casimir stands, okay. It passes.
Me too.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, our next policy will be on non-discrimination policy. Our current policy is number five-one-six-two. We will be replacing this policy with K policy oh-five-two-one. This new policy expands the explanation of discrimination and harassment. It also adds the contact person at the district level and their contact information. So similar to what Mr. Medina was saying that we did with the health, we took out an individual's specific name and put the title, which is our Chief Human Resource Officer, and a contact email for that person. There is also a contact information for the United States Department of Ed's Office of Civil Rights in Washington, DC. This policy will also be one of the ones we are looking to implement after immediate approval from the board tonight. Any questions?
Questions on the board? There's no questions? Mr. Sikolovick?
Motion to approve the non-discrimination policy and notice, P zero-five-two-one A for immediate implementation imposed.
Any further, oh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Medina, any further debate?
Not debate, just a point of information clarification request that we immediately post this to the website, don't make the same mistake I made in the past in holding off until we get a group approved before we post it because then things get lost.
Is there any further debate? We'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
I abstained.
Ms. Casimir and Ms. Baptiste Perez abstain. Thank you, that one passes. Moving on, we're looking at the first read and discussion of the following updated revised policies. One is the use of exclusionary timeout settings, policy fifty-one-four-four-point-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the next three are going to be a little bit more complicated and a more involved conversation. But we discussed bringing the remaining for the first read by the board. So this is K policy five-one-one-four. We do not currently have an exclusionary timeout policy. We'll be adding this policy to our district policies. This gives specific information regarding the definitions of exclusionary timeout, seclusion, physical restraint. It also discusses the setting and space, the proper use of timeout settings. There is also a sample data collection form for when a child is in a designated timeout setting. Each building has a crisis intervention team that mobilizes when there is an issue. On that team, there is at least one staff member who is CPI trained. For buildings that have specialized programs such as our AMES or programs, there'll be more than one staff member trained in those buildings. I'll go ahead and ensure that what is best practice in regards to special education is also part of this policy. So shared during the committee meeting, special education has been using seclusion and restraint. You know, upon reviewing our exclusionary restraint in terms of special education and this policy, they are aligned. Also, I know that Mr. Sikolovick had made the recommendation, even though it's in here, he wanted us to add certain language to the policy that specifically specifies when a restraint or seclusion can be used. I think it's embedded in the document, but I think he wanted it spelled out more. And again, this will be the first read for feedback, that will then go back to the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, do we have any discussions, questions, feedback? Yeah, Mr. Traber? Oh, we'll go with Mr. Traber and then Ms. Casimir.
This entire section is new?
Yes, that's correct.
No other question?
Ms. Casimir?
I know this, this kind of thing, you know, this kind of policy can be tricky. So I guess I'm just going to ask like a real live question, like if there is a, let's say a middle school age student that is in the class and poses, like, I'm just, just an example, like physical harm to another student. Does this, like, when we talk about restraint, and again, I know there's a lot here to unpack, but is, you know, the teacher, the, you know, the aide, whoever the adults are in the class, they're, you know, in the example that I just gave, are they allowed to like step in and intervene from that child, like, you know, doing more damage to another child or to a teacher? Like, I guess that's what I'm trying, because I know that these laws change, you know, they've changed several times or, and different districts interpret them different ways, but does this like basically mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is this is basically mean like no, the adults in the room are not able to restrain a student even if they're causing like physical harm to somebody? I guess that's what I'm asking. You understand what I'm saying?
I, yes, I think I understand the question. So, you know, I'll say just, you know, a standing, you know, train of thought would be that, you know, the only point in time that will ever physically intervene is if a child is a safety concern to themselves or others, right? Besides that, at no point in time should we be physically intervening. In the example that you gave, I think there are other things that can be done with that example besides a restraint. You know, that can be literally like moving the students from the classroom if a child is having a difficult time to allow the child to de-escalate. So I think very often it's, it's based on one, that child's IEP. Very often, seclusion and restraints are part of a behavior plan or a part of an IEP and when they can be used. So I think it'd depend on the situation. But based on the situation you gave, you know, I think there are other things that we could do within that example that might not get to the point of restraining, of restraining the student.
Yes, that's perfect, I abstain, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, with that, kind of adding on to Ms. Casimir's question, understanding that there's other options prior, like the de-escalation part, recognizing that there's going to be an outburst, like noticing the signs beforehand is important. But are, I know that there's certain teachers trained in crisis prevention. If it's happening in a mainstream classroom though, and a teacher is not trained in that, is there a way that we can? I know CPI costs money, but is there a way where we are training staff to recognize those behaviors prior to, again, into a situation like Ms. Casimir said? Who may, that staff who may not have the experience in the de-escalation or noticing?
And I know throughout the year, and if you're going to expand on that, I know that there's training throughout the year in terms of CPI training. We're fortunate enough to have in-district trainer who regularly holds, you know, training session for staff, teachers, powers, administrators. So, you know, that, you know, like I was saying, you know, the goal is not to physically harm the kids, I mean, sorry, restrain the kids. We're always looking to de-escalate a situation, that's our number one goal, is how do we bring the situation down? How do we calm things down or how do we, you know, either get the rest of the students, you know, out of harms way? You know, to your point, you know, I think we're most likely of harm's way, you know, to your point, you know, I think, um, we'll, we'll most likely have to train more staff. The other piece is that, you know, like I was saying, each, each building, um, um, does have a crisis intervention team, the situation, a situation right in the classroom, you know, a teacher can always call for assistance from that team. And, uh, most likely, members of that team would have the CPI, you know, tr- training. Um, you know, like, in special education, restraints and seclusions have been occurring. Um, I think the main difference is that, you know, Bridgeport doesn't have a policy specific to it. Um, those are being, um, those were occurring based on a child's IEP and what was written within the IEP. I think what this is doing, it's actually making, um, a district policy that covers all students, um, who, um, are either restrained or secluded.
And I just want to, and you could, um, because I'm, I'm not advocating for the restraint part, I'm advocating more for the, the crisis prevention part, the non, non-violent interventions. So the, the lead up to that, right, when we recognize the behaviors, I'm advocating, I'm, I'm asking if we're gonna, if we can look into training staff at that part, because you can get CPI certified without using restraints. You can, and, and we can reach, we can train certain staff members on that. But if we could get the first part of it done, that the, the important part, recognizing behaviors, um, knowing what to do and, and if you're, if there's anxiety, uh, um, in a kid, right? Or if they're becoming defensive, you recognize those behaviors first. And, and you can prevent the, the blow up, right? By doing that, and so if we could, if we can look into somehow training staff on that, and, and I'm not just saying spec- specialized staff, I'm saying like all staff. Um, because, and, and I know that, that's a big ask and, and, um, but, but it's an important ask, because it, it prevents, noticing those behaviors prevents the outburst, like, like, uh, the scenario Ms. Kastner says.
Yeah, yeah. And Madam Chair, I, I think that's gonna be one of, one of the things we have discussed. Because we're seeing those types of behaviors at a younger age, it's gonna be, you know, very important that we start as, as a continuous, you know, continuum of, of PD opportunities for teachers and administrators, you know, aides, paraprofessionals, we have to do that from day one. And we have to continue to do it on a monthly, weekly basis, and everything that we do, we have to be able to bring that, because we have to, because we, we do, we normally do a one-time training during, at the beginning of the school year, and we don't do anything for the rest of the school year. We have to constantly bring this back and give staff training, especially when you start looking at, you know, keeping or, or doing way with restorative practices pieces. One of the things that we have to do is constantly bring training of how to de-escalate, how to deal with the different types of behaviors that we're seeing in our buildings more frequently, uh, and so I think that's gonna be important that we do that.
So we actually have seven certified, uh, trainer or trainers within the district, and we do host monthly CPI training for, we do initial training, which is two days, and then we do refreshers, which is a one-day training.
Perfect.
Each month.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just to add to, to, to what, what you were saying, you know, part of what we've been discussing with the executive directors is what, you know, the end of the school year is going to look like and what the start of the school year is going to look like in terms of all of the professional development that has to be offered, and how, to your point, we can get some of the critical PDs done early in the year, and to Dr. Avery's point, how do we continue it throughout the course of the year, like refreshers?
Mr. Sokolovik?
I apologize if I saw this form before, because I should have thought of it in, uh, committee, but I'd like to propose a revision of the sample timeout setting data collection form to add some demographic information as far as the race, gender, age of the student as well. This way we could track, because as we noticed, sometimes the proportionality, disproportionality of punishments when it comes to certain demographics, and it would be great to have that information at our fingertips rather than have to research it.
Thank you, I'll add that.
Yeah, there was a recent article that said, um, there's a four percent increase, and most of the, a majority of those restraints were in, um, black and brown students. Um, so that, in, in four percent in the state, not in Bridgeport, but in the state. So that's a, that's a good thing to add.
Trayber, I also know what I added. I added, I requested to be added demographic information, race, age, gender. But that's a physics consensus, it's still on our first read, so it's not actionable.
You just put your microphone on. You can put your microphone on to them.
Yeah, I made, I make you know that way, we can bring it up in committee for the adding of the race, age, and gender, so.
Okay. Is there a question on this side?
Um.
Mr. Trayber?
Yeah, I just, I, I have a concern about overly bureaucratizing a classroom. Um, so at what point do I have to fill out a form if I'm a teacher? I have a student who's bossed it a little bit. I tell him, go stand in the doorway, and in five minutes, I go talk to him in the doorway while the class gets to some work about what we were talking about, and I go help him calm down. Um, so he took a five-minute timeout in the doorway, and, you know, maybe we do some breaths, we do some deep breaths, and we talk about why his behavior was inappropriate, and then he returns to his desk and resumes learning. I'm gonna fill out a form for that.
So, so, um, I, you know, I'm, I, I.
Can he answer your question?
It's, well, I just wanna finish making my point, it's, it, it's like, sort of, there, there, that's, I was sort of be, trying to get through the form, and then when I, when Joe mentioned this, I'm thinking, hmm, okay. So, yeah, that's sort of what I'm wondering about, is how many forms do I have to fill out? Is this gonna be on the computer, and now I gotta sit down at the computer and fill out a form for having that discussion with Johnny?
Uh, Dr. Saki?
Yeah, and I think that, um,
Wait.
Yeah, he passed it over. Yes, yeah. I, and I think this is why we're in the first reading, that way we can analyze and, and change whatever we need to change, because if you read it, there's different sections on the reasons when and where, so it's up to us to put that in the, in our policy to describe it, because they can't make that decision right now, because it's not a policy right now.
Oh, I get, I get that, it's my first chance to have a look at it, and so I'm just looking at it and ingesting it and thinking about it. We joked at my last committee meeting about, you know, that point in the day where you send Johnny next to, to the teacher's class across the hall and say, take this work with you, and we all have, we all extend that courtesy to each other, and the student spends a half hour across the hall, that's a, an extended timeout, because I've had enough of Johnny today, and that would qualify under this policy as a timeout.
Uh, uh, thank you for the question, Mr. Trayber. I think, you know, going back to, you know, what, um, Mr. Medina was saying as well, I think, um, we do have the flexibility to make some, some adjustments to this, so, but I wanna respond to, like, seclusion and restraints, and I'll have Michelle talk a bit about timeout. You know, whenever a child is restrained, um, or secluded, you know, then this form, uh, you know, has to be completed. Now, in terms of timeout as described, Michelle, would you like to talk a little bit about the timeout piece? I mean, it's pretty.
So basically, when they are actually removed to another setting, and it, it could be in another teacher's classroom, um, that student has to be able to freely be able to, to leave. It is for de-escalation purposes, and, you know, after fifteen minutes, you reassess if the student needs to continue to, to stay. Um, if, if they haven't de-escalated after, you know, an hour, that timeout could lead to seclusion, it could also lead to restraint. So it really depends on the situation and the extreme of that situation as to whether you start with a restraint, you go to timeout, and then you go to seclusion. We would hope that the de-escalation techniques would prevent that. But as far as restraint, the minute I restrain a student, I have to complete that form. For timeout, for exclusionary timeout, within that fifteen minutes, I have to complete the form.
Yeah, but what I, the example I gave, there's no restraint involved.
The example you gave is inclusionary, not exclusionary, because there, it's still in the classroom. You said to fill out another part of the classroom.
No, I, I, there are times, the, the first example I gave, Johnny never left the classroom.
Okay.
The second example I gave, I said, Johnny, I've had enough, we're gonna, you're gonna, let's go across the hall, you're gonna sit in, in Mrs. Jones' class, and so I take Johnny across the hall and say, Ms. Jones, can Johnny stay in your class for a while? And he goes to a, a desk in Mrs. Jones' class and does some work that I give him in the back of Mrs. Jones' class. And sometimes that can be for fifteen minutes, sometimes that can be for an hour.
And I think
To lunch.
That.
He sits back there, and he's never been restrained, he's never been.
Let's, let, let her answer it.
I'm finishing the example.
I know, we go at it.
And I think a case similar to that, we, we are going to have to explore a little bit more as to whether or not that will meet the definition of exclusionary timeout. The example that you gave where you're talking to Johnny right there in the doorway, that's not an exclusionary timeout. The gray area is the scenario in which you are describing where we send the student to another teacher's classroom, because when I look at the definition, it could meet that definition.
And, and, you know, and, 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 and just to add, um, the, the timeouts are part of a student's IEPs, right? So part of the plan in terms of helping this particular child de-escalate would be utilizing something like, um, give that to the child, uh, uh, a timeout and a timeout setting to help them de-escalate.
Um, your reference to this being part of a student's IEP, this is not, is this only oriented to students with IEPs?
No, so yes, for students who, who do, do have an IEP, this would be written into the plan.
I understand that.
For a gened student, um, no, that would not be part of his IEP.
Okay.
Mr. Woodson?
Uh, yes, Dr. Sack, is this policy, uh, recommended by CAPE?
Um, yes, sir, yeah, this is the, uh, sample CAPE policy for, um, exclusionary timeout.
It, it's the exact way that is, that is written from CAPE? Did we change anything to the writing from CAPE?
Um, no, this is, this is the exact policy from CAPE.
Sokolovik first.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, we'll go to Mr. Trayber's example, as far as exclusionary timeouts and the state definition. How much, we don't have much leeway to change it if it does meet the definition of an exclusionary timeout, correct? I mean, as far as sending a kid to the other classroom? Because at fir- at first blush, I think, uh, maybe the intent of the legislation and the policy is to account for time learning lost out of the classroom, so that student that would go to the other classroom, if that student falls under the definition, we can't touch that part of the policy, correct?
I don't know if I understand the, um, the question.
Um, how much flex, how much flexibility, how much of this policy is written into state statute?
I would have to do some research and get back to you, I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, because, because we don't wanna change anything that would be contrary to our reporting requirements under the law. So this is something we definitely gotta look at, because I, I, I would think at first blush, an exclusionary timeout is when a student is excluded from the learning environment and is not receiving their instruction. So I would think that would trigger. But I don't think that's something we could change, at least at first thought. Thank you, and maybe we look, look at that before we bring it back to committee.
So there is, um, state statute that is, um, attached to this, but I, I'll just have to review that state statute so I can give you a, um, complete response to that. Um, and we can discuss this, Mr. Medina, at our committee meeting.
Mr. Medina?
That's exactly what I wanna make a point to elaborate on what Joe said, and also what Mr. Woodson said, because my understanding and everything that I read through this, and I have read the state statute to match it, is that these are mandated policies. So these are, like he said, at the end, when you look, they are state statutes, uh, linked specifically to it in the legal, uh, references. So this is why it was presented to me, and I asked for Mr. Avery and his team to give me, I actually challenged him, he said he can give me four, and I said, okay, if you can give me four, give me five, that we need to consider ASAP, that we're covered. You know, this is to cover us from any, uh, you know, liabilities or anything like that, so this is why it was presented first, uh, because I asked them, what are, you know, in the twenty-eight or plus, or twenty-plus, let me just say that, the twenty-plus that CAPE made recommendations for us to look at, I wanted to get at least a top five to try to start working and getting things, uh, in order to make sure that we add what we need to add, and we can read it together as a board. So that's why what state mandated was what, why we were touching these.
Is any thing else for the first read, do we wanna? We have a, the second item is, um, alcohol use, drugs, and tobacco policy, uh, P fifty one thirty-one.
Okay, yeah, this one is also a bit, um, a bit complicated. Uh, this is going to require some level of, 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 uh, discussion. Um, our current, our current policy numbers, um, five one three six and five one three seven, um, we'll be replacing these policies with K policy five one three one. This new policy expands the definition of drugs, controlled substances, um, under the influence, electronic nicotine, liquid nicotine, vapor products. It also discusses students' privacy rights, explanation of illegal activities, um, discussion on performance-enhancing drugs, medical marijuana, and use of CBD products. Uh, it talks, um, as well about disciplinary actions for the various infractions when it has to do with any of these products. The policy requires a drug-free awareness program, which is currently incorporated into some of our SCL curriculum. It also gives additional information on drugs and alcohol, inhalants, e-cigarettes, and performance-enhancing drugs. Um, and I think, you know, that the medical marijuana and the use of CBD products is a section that, you know, we, we need to pay close attention to.
Thank you. Discussing on this one? Mr. Sokolovik?
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe when I stepped out, maybe you mentioned it, I apologize if you did. Did we, um, look into the question of illegal, um, in state in Connecticut?
Yes, and, and, um, Mrs. Sokolovik, I know we, we had this conversation, um, about, um, changing or clarifying some of the language around, um, marijuana and, you know, the, it, it being illegal. I know we had discussed that, you know, obviously in a school setting, anyone under twenty-one, for them, it's illegal. But to your point, the way that it was written, it just simply said illegal. So I, I'll say up to the board in terms of how, if you wanted that to be reworded, to make that clearer, um.
Again, like the last policy I mentioned, if it's not in contrary to state statute to add that language, I think it would be preferable to be accurate that it's illegal for children under twenty-one, rather than illegal in the state of Connecticut, because it's just not true. But only if it's in, not in contrary to state statute.
And yes, there, there, there are several references here regarding state statute, so, um, that is something, um, I would review as well, um, prior to our next meeting.
Good, and, and, um, the good thing about these policies is they're student-centered policies, and it can't take effect until the next school year anyway, unless we make a special motion to put them in place immediately, which is really never a good idea, because you don't wanna change the rules on occasion midstream.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Avery?
I wanna make sure that the board is aware that the, the five policies that are presented to you for consideration, the board, Bridgeport Public Board of Ed are out of compliance, because we have no updated policies with these five policies since twenty fifteen. And because we are out of compliance, uh, CAPE felt that we needed to put these in front of the board with considerations for approval in order to get us within policy, giving us, giving a little bit more time to kind of work through details of what we want to make sure for clarity for the board, uh, you know, of what we want to make sure for clarity for the board, uh, you know. But if we keep delaying it, we're still, if anything happens in the area of health and medical records, non-discriminatory policy and, and, you know, uh, use of exclusionary timeout, alcohol and drugs, we could be liable, because we have no policy governing the actions of what happens within the school district. So it's so important that when we draft the policies, that we at least are able to kind of consider them, and then giving time to go back in detail, to fine-tune them, to align to what the board is wanting us to do. We can, we can do that, but I think it's important that, uh, that we, we at least get these five policies, which we're, which we're doing, we not, we, we, we waived two of them to get them out there pretty good, but the la-, the, the two that I had, uh, Dr. Sackey pulled back, because they're very integral. Uh, specific things that I think is important, a lot of it's statute. Because what happened over the last couple of years, especially with, um, the alcohol and drug policy, if we would have kept up with the policy over the last four or five years, minor tweaks would have had to happen, because you've already had, but since we haven't done it in, you know, several years, there's a lot of policies that changed maybe three years ago, four years ago, that were so far out of plan. So what CAPE did for me was pull everything in statute, given us sample policies to follow, and what I had, uh, Dr. Sackey and staff do is to streamline them to fit the district as best we possibly could, and then bringing them to, uh, you know, Mr. Medina's committee to kind of flesh out a little bit. And we've done that, we started to do that process, uh, but these are the critical ones that I wanted to make sure, and uh, been working with Mr. Medina, it's, and this has been a slow process, but uh, it's important that we get something, uh, in policy and sort of that, so that we can have a little guidance. So that's kind of where we are.
Traver?
Yeah, my understanding of what Mr. Skolovik said, which we've had that discussion last year, is this changing student policies like when we were enacting the code of conduct, they shouldn't take effect. You can't change policy in the middle of the year, because you're changing the rules on the kids in the middle of the year. That was the point Mr. Skolovik just made, was changing these rules mid-year. It just doesn't make sense.
But your student code of conduct should follow board policy. And so when they created the, the student code of conduct that we approved last year,
It should not have taken effect until the following year. Period. And so if it was changed, that was incorrect. And so I'm, I'm just, that's the point, that it's, when you do that, it should have waited until the following year, so that you, when you start the year, you say to the kids, here's the policies. Not in April or whenever it was done, we say, oh, now we've got a new policy. And so to me, that's logical. You don't have, start the year with one set of rules, and in the middle of the year say, okay, we've changed the rules now. Um, and so I, I, I see the logic of that. I hear what you're saying, but I do recall very clearly being told by the CAPE people when they started working with us, that about seventy or eighty percent of the districts in the state are not in compliance. And so we're actually better than most, is what I believe he said to us on more, on several occasions, when he started working with us. So I, 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 I understand the is, the desire to get ourselves in a better position, and we're certainly working with them to do that. But I, you know, I, I'm, you know, it's, it, I guess, cause it's nine o'clock at night and I'm not feeling particularly well, I'm in a sort of grumpy mood anyway, but I'm not feeling really sort of in a compliant mood. Um, and this just goes against what I understand makes sense. Uh, as a teacher, it goes against what I understand makes sense as a, uh, you know, maker of rules. Um, and it just seems to me that we should do it the right way. And the right way is that we work on it, we go through the two readings, and we implement a new policy, and by the time we do that, we're already in April. May, June, we got a month and a half left in the school year, we don't change the rules. We wait until the end of the school year, and we've folded into our policy. And so when the kids come back the next year, we've got a new policy that we explain to them and the staffs. It just doesn't make sense to do it otherwise for me.
This is the first read still.
I know. So first read.
And then we go back to committee.
Come back again.
So we have, we're not implementing this, this tomorrow. Mr. Woodson?
Ah, yes, um, I, I hear Dr. Avery, you know, expressing the importance of having these articles, these five articles or, you know, wha-, whatever they're called, you know. Just having them on the books, just to say that we ha- have them, and we could, um, you know, have, you know, just go and, and as long as we have them, we could go from there and, 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 and plan forward, but to have all, a- a- all the time, every time somebody proposes a policy or something, it's to, to make a big deal about it. Especially when, when you hear Dr. Avery expressing how important it is to have these policies in place. Whether they're old or they're out of, out of date, or they don't match what the district has, has aligned, you know, is, is, is irrelevant. You know, he said it's important, let's get it done, and then we could make changes from, from, you know, where, where, where we stand, but we cannot just keep not listening to Dr. Avery. He's the, he's the, you know, the, the, you know, our guidance, and when it comes to things like this, that's his job. You know, this is, you know, and to have policies not in place so that, so the man can act and, you know, just have, have, have some type of laws to stand on is, is, is just irresponsible. Thank you.
All right, um, Ms. Kastner?
Madam Chair, I agree with what Mr. Woodson just said. I mirror it a hundred percent. You know, when I listen to Dr. Avery say, hey, listen, we've had nothing, or hardly anything on the books when it comes to something as important as this, like, I, I agree, um. I've read through this policy, I'm not speaking as somebody who hasn't read it. And, and, and there's nothing there that I would say, oh, wow, you know, that's gonna get us in a bind if we try to go back to this at a later time and readjust it, like, this is necessary, and, you know, that's all I wanted to say. I just want to mirror what, um, Mr. Woodson said.
Mr. Medina?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with both of you, and I just want to make sure that it's in, in line with what we're doing. We're just following right now with our policies, so this is the first read, so I want to ground this and just, let's try to land this, uh, airplane real quick, because this is our first read, this is what we're here for, to discuss it, to make changes or suggest changes, to make sure that we comply with whatever it is. And like I said, these are all backed up by state mandates, so this is some things that are mandatory. But by our bylaws, we wanted to make sure these two are, are read, a little bit more about you guys. I sent it to you guys, to the whole board, back when we did our first training, uh, with CAPE. And, and, and again, I mirror the, the, the notion and the recollection of our minds, me and Traver, that, uh, yes, they said that we're one of the, you know, we're in good standing compared to some other people, other, uh, district, as far as compliance and all that stuff. But to Mr. uh, Skolovik's point, um, we can't, we can't put this forward in the sense of out there until, uh, we vet it, and then we put it out there for the whole district to know, parents, students, uh, even staff. You know, can we put it on our website right away? Yes. You know, they, they know this is what's coming up, this is what we're in, uh, uh, we're moving forward as a policy, as a board. So yes, we could put it on our website already. It doesn't mean that they're held to those standards, but we can have it, and they can have that as a guideline, and I think that's what Mr. Avery wants, is to put it forward right away, that way the district knows this is the policy in our district moving forward. Cause the, the board voted because it's state mandate. And again, I, I, I'm interested in getting in contact with CAPE to find out about whether this can start now, or is supposed to start next school year because of the way it is, it's done. I got, I, I'm interested to find that out, too, get some clarity with that.
Madam Chair, would you please allow us to do that? That's our jobs to be able to do that. We will, we'll contact CAPE, we'll make sure if, if this policy is passed, will it affect the current student code of conduct? If it does, we can go back and bring a revised student code of conduct back to the board in the necessary timeframe to be able to make sure that there's no real conflicting things for, uh, and campuses to have to adhere to. So we can, we can make that work. We can make that work.
I would also like to add that, that there is a sense of urgency with this policy, because drug use in the schools is very common. It's, it, not only in high schools, middle schoolers are doing it. They're bringing, there, there's, uh, there's heavy use within the schools. But I just wanted to say there is a sense of urgency for this. Mr. Skolovik?
Yes, um, looking for you, cause I don't know, it kind of sounds like the narrative is that we don't have a policy. Are we saying that if our kids are caught with a liquor bottle in school, if they're caught with marijuana, if they're caught with drugs, absolutely nothing happens to them?
We, no, we have, we have policy, but the policies, this po-, this particular policy is not up to, uh, state standard as being, uh, that governs schools, uh, as we speak. This, you know, that, that, I think at one time marijuana was, was, was legal, now it's not, in certain circumstances. Even like with staff, there's policy about drug use with staff that have to be adhered to in this policy. There's a number of different things.
Yeah, I, I understand, it's just this sense of urgency that's being placed on us, like if we put a new piece of paper up, like everybody's gonna start, just start complying, oh, wait, it says this now, let's stop using drugs and all this and that. So it's not, it's not the sense of urgency that I see. And also, um, as far as the policy of taking effect next year, that's one of the board policies as well. We would have to waive that. It's put in place because the children would be affected by one rule media, and not even know if we, if we have a rule that goes in effect tomorrow, and your consequence is two-day suspension. And then tomorrow it's in effect, and it's a ten-day suspension. That's not fair, cause you didn't know that, your consequences, your actions would have stronger consequences. And, and that's why that policy's in place. That policy can in fact be waived. But like I said, I would really, really seriously consider not waiving that policy, except in the most extreme circumstances.
To add what you're saying, you know, I think you, correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned, just because we put a policy, doesn't mean they'll, they're gonna stop doing what they're doing. No, that's not the case, but we could put a policy in place that also provides support for these students. You know, and that's what I mentioned to committee, that, you know, it's not just they have this item on them, um, automatic suspension, what are the services we can offer? And that's something that I, that was brought up at committee that we can continue talking about as well. Um, if there is resources that we can provide to the school as well, whether it's outside referrals somewhere, do you mind, I'll turn your mic off, um, outside referral somewhere, or, um, or whatnot. Those are the types of things we could add within the policy. So it's not just, uh, a policy in which it's a consequence, uh, negative consequence for their behavior. We can also add some, um, some other con-, like more positive consequences, like, okay, let's put you in a program or help you with services.
It's just like, it's just like, you know, four, five years ago, vape pens were, was not, they were not a thing. Now they are. And so this policy updates the things that we can and can't do with the vape pens uh, into the policy. And so again, it's just, you know, just a few things that, you know, we still have policy in place that will govern really most of the things that's gonna be, but there's just a, a few things that needs to be tweaked with it.
What I would suggest would probably be a good compromise, between all these situations. We pass it, we put it up on, put it up on the website at effective June thirtieth at the end of the school year. And then they'll be aware is there, and they'll be aware of these revisions, and we'll have a new updated policy up on the website in order to, I mean, we've got, we're, we're closing in on that timeline anyway, with March, by the time it gets back out of committee and first or second read, we're there anyway.
And, and I think we'll have an answer from CAPE, you know, probably tomorrow. Uh, and as we bring it back to committee, Mr. Medina, we will be able to provide you guys a little bit of clarity. It's to the urgency of when it needs to be done, uh, and go from there. So as, a- again, when I present, when, when CAPE presented to my cabinet regarding these policies, the urgency was, we gotta get these things, you know, through. We can, we can bypass, you know, reading if we do what we did at, you know, with, with item C and D, uh, like we did the other ones, just to get them moved through for a second and third reading, we could do one reading to get them po-, posted, and then we can modify from there. So that's, that's really the, the urgency, where I said urgency, that's what I meant by that. So, uh, it's, and, and you, you clarified that as well, Mr. Medina, so yes.
First, any board members who haven't asked questions yet, and then we'll go to Mr. Traver? Okay, Mr. Traver?
Yeah, and I, I wasn't speaking to the drug policy. I was speaking to the employee policy, where you can't take a group of teachers who have been doing exclusionary activities for however long they have, and say, oh, you can't do that anymore. We have a whole new way of doing it with two months left in the school year. You're implementing a new policy, and you're gonna need to do training and everything else. And I'm assuming you've got other things planned for the rest of the year in training. So I just think that gets a little complicated, and you're better off training them at the beginning of the next year on new policies like this. But you tell me, you had nothing planned? Okay. But it seems to me you probably had other things planned.
Anybody else on the policy fifty-one thirty-one? Those will go back to committee for further discussions. The next item is the discussion of possible approval of the elimination of, uh, two-to-one pair, uh, kindergarten parents funded through Delta T. So who's presenting?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. The whole idea here is to elimination of, uh, two-to-one, uh, parents for that, that, that Delta employees, they're not they're not City of Bridgeport employees, so there's no unemployment to be paid. Again, Delta two-to-one parents, we are funded, or we're in the school system. And it was eliminated when the district hit hardship, then it got reinstated with ESAR money. Uh, when the budget, this current year budget was being drafted, it was included to be eliminated as part of the budget closing measures. But again, uh, some things that were included as part of the gap closing measures this year, we are not followed up, so this is one of them. Uh, basically purpo-, basically proposing for its elimination next fiscal year, not this fiscal year. Meaning that the employees will be, the, there'll be coverage of two-to-one parents till the end of this school year. Come next school year, it will not be in existence, which is next fiscal year, twen-, fiscal year twenty-six. It's part of the gap, gap closing measures. That's being factored in into closing the gap next year. It was adopted by the finance committee.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Niko? Mrs. Skolovik? You, can you put your microphone on for that?
I move the elimination of the kindergarten, two-to-one kindergarten parents funded through Delta T was reinstated with ESAR funds?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded by Mrs. Kalovic, moved by Mr. Traver. Is there any further debate on that?
No, I have nothing further.
Uh, Mr. Skolovik and the miss-
Yes, this is one of the most unkindest cuts we're gonna have to make. Last go-around, I think it was two thousand sixteen, just prior to my board service, when we eliminated the parent professionals. This room was packed. This is how used to the abuse the city of Bridgeport has gotten. We have nobody, last year there was kindergarten teachers, I just wanted to raise up with all the positions, the next, next item on the agenda, they came out and spoke for themselves. with all the positions, the next, next item on the agenda, they came out and spoke for themselves. So we know what they, it says the principals came out to spoke for themselves, speak for themselves. Now, I'm going to vote for this cut. But let's realize what we're cutting. We're cutting from kindergarten classrooms. A second adult. Second adult in a classroom there to help our teachers manage a classroom of 24, 25 plus five or six years, five or six year old students. Many who have never been away from home for the first time. They can't tie their shoes. A lot of them can't use the restroom. A lot of them need help. A lot of them crying for mommy. And while these teachers have to assist these children, they're not teaching ABCs. So right away, our children are missing out from kindergarten to the first grade. And this is the position we're in for the second time in 10 years, removing all our kindergarten paraprofessionals. They don't do this in Greenwich. They don't do this in Westport. They don't do this in Fairfield. They all have paraprofessionals. Why can't Bridgeport have paraprofessionals? Why does Bridgeport have to cut $28 million? Why do our children have to continue to suffer? Why do we have to hear from the governor that we shouldn't have spent money on these positions that it was irresponsible to hire them? These positions that were hired that are now being excluded, they got our children, some of our children services to give them a leg up. So this will show, this will show progress for our students throughout their whole tenure. But unfortunately, the students coming up in kindergarten next year will not have them because we're going to have to make this cut. Thank you.
Dr. Ramirez, then Mr. Woodson, then Mr. Traver.
Um, so earlier today, I suggested that Dr. Avery surveys the principals for potential cuts. So I think it would be prudent to at least wait to hear what the principals have to say. Um, and if they can come up with some cost saving measures before we actually vote on this. And I feel pretty strongly about that on items FGNH. Let's see what the principals come back. They know the schools better than us. I mean, worse comes to worse. If they come back and they don't have significant changes, we still have to make these decisions no matter what. These decisions are for 2025 to 2026. So we wouldn't get any savings for the school year anyways.
Mr. Woodson?
Uh, yes, I, I agree with Ms. Jimenez. You know, I think that we should, you know, at least get the opinions of the, of, of the principals because you know, they're, they're the ones who I think are going to be the most affected by this. They're, they're the ones who when those people aren't in place, that are, that, that, that aren't going to be, that the principals are going to have another job to do. Which I know that, you know, principals are already swamped. So, you know, w- once you get rid of a vital, vital part of, 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 of of our, you know, our, what we used to do on a daily basis, the principals are going to, that's, that, that responsibility is going to fall on the principals and you know, like I said, they, I think if you ask them, you, you, you're going to get some surprising responses and it, I would, I would, I would just think that they would not recommend to make these cuts. So I, I, I think we, I agree with Ms. Jimenez. We should at least get a, get an opinion from the, from the principals before we, before we make a decision. So we, we could be at least, uh, as most as, and, and as informed as we could be. Thanks.
Mr. Traver?
Um, I think it's a great idea to ask the principals, um, because we need another 15 to 20 million dollars worth of cuts. Um, and so we're going to need more ideas than this. Um, I, I was, uh, I was deeply involved with the cuts in when Mr. Sikolovick was talking. Um, uh, the cuts that drove um, Superintendent Ramos and the board to say that they couldn't in good conscience pass the budget that they thought would actually educate the children of Bridgeport. Um, and they threw up their hands and broke the law because the law of Connecticut says the board has to pass a budget. It's their fiduciary responsibility. Uh, that brought in Paul Valles. Um, and we went through the turmoil of that. Uh, subsequent to that, Mr. Sikolovick mentioned the budget that got us to eliminate all kindergarten paras. There was a day when we had a para in every first grade classroom and second grade classroom too. Not just kindergarten. And this is eliminating, uh, we restored with the ESAR money, a kindergarten para in every other classroom. Not every classroom. We used to have in every classroom. So with the ESAR money, we said, okay, we'll share a para between two classrooms. Um, if, if we were to get the kind of money they're looking at with 1511, well, maybe we could restore paras to every classroom and put the money in, maybe even start putting paras back into the first grades. Who knows? Because that's what you really need. I remember arguing with Senator McCrory last year about that. As he was challenging me to, what kind of other stuff are you going to do with the money? If we gave you the money? And I said, well, you're old enough and I'm old enough to remember when we had them because I had an arbitration in his district in Hartford. When we were, they were eliminating first grade paras. So it, it, you know, these are the kinds of things we should be having. To free up the teacher to work with the kids that need the extra help. To, for all the reasons that you all are articulating and I, I, I'm all for all that. But we still have 15 to 20 million dollars worth of cuts to the, to go. And I, I, you know, if the principals can come up with ways to save that money, God bless them. Um, and but I think tonight we need to start taking the actions and, and trust me, it, it's to me, it's because people aren't taking us seriously. Uh, half the people who are in this room tonight, I've known for years. They need to take us seriously that this is the, the reality that we're looking at. So they'll go back and, you know, let's take your suggestion. Let's, let's give them, let's ask them to come up with better ideas. By all means. Um, and take those ideas and say, this is what we're going to have to do because none of them are good. None of them are going to be good. We're all operating in bare bones in this district. So I, I, I couldn't agree with you more. Let's ask them if they have a better idea because we can always rescind this proposal. But I think we've got to start making cuts now and we got to make it clear to people, this is what we're looking at. We can't keep talking. Nobody understands when we say, oh, we got to make 25 million dollars worth of cuts. And, you know, like, nobody makes that kind of money. They don't understand how bad that is. So we need to, to make it real. And then people will begin to understand. So I, I, I think we can do both. And if somebody comes up with better ideas, we can take this one back.
Ms. Casimir?
Hi, um, I absolutely agree with, uh, Ms. Jimenez, not only, not only on this item, but on the other items that she also referenced. Um, I will say, yes, I agree. Uh, the principals definitely need to need to have a conversation with the people who are on the front line inside the buildings. Not only the principals, but if there's a vice principal in there, like for instance, uh, recently I, I visited, did a tour at Reed, Hooker, DLC, Skane, Tisdale and Roosevelt. Um, you know, the the, uh, principal at Roosevelt told me that, and, and this is another thing that I'm segueing into. I, I, I feel very strongly about each and every board member going into the schools and getting a tour of the school from the principals, that the people who are running the building. Um, Roosevelt School told me that I was the second board member that took a tour of her school in 10 years. The second board member in 10 years. So when we're sitting at this table and we're having these discussions, I think it's also important to get in the school buildings. If you haven't already, in all of them. And talk to the principals, but the vice principal over at Hooker, I know for a fact had a lot of suggestions on cuts that can be made. I think that he was just cut from there if I'm not mistaken, but if we want to just, you know, kind of like go back to him, if anybody's interested, he had um, some ideas that he wanted to share with the superintendent. So, um, yeah, you know, it's easy to sit around the table and talk about things that should be done. Um, when you haven't even stepped foot inside of the building as well. That's all. I'm not trying to make anybody feel bad. I'm not trying to insult anybody, but as somebody who has gone and visited all these schools except for three I have left out of all the schools in the district, um, it, it's something that, that should be considered. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Benahan, then Ms. Baptiste Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, very simple. I know today, teachers and principals and a lot of people came tonight. It was very clear the information, the permission to give it to us. And I know para is so important, very so important for kindergarten. I see para, they take care of the, the student very well. I see parents, they trust, they trust a hundred percent of para. They trust more that their family. They say, I prefer the para you stay with my son or my daughter because I don't, I cannot deal with my family. That's the trust, you know, that's the, the most important. I know we need to save money. I know we have to cut, but, uh, like I say, we don't want to save money and cut hurting our students and the parents. So I'm very clear that I'm against that. Just want to do that for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Baptiste Perez?
I'd like to make a motion to table the elimination of two to one kindergarten paras funded by, funded through Delta T until, uh, results from a principal based survey.
I second.
Is that all right? There's already a motion on the floor.
It's the most, it's to table the current motion. Until
Not everybody even had a chance to speak to it yet.
There's, there's been a motion, um, to move the item. And it's been seconded already. We'll just have to take a vote on that. But Mr. Medina?
And so wait, you're not? I'm going to call the question. I'm going to make a motion to call the question on the current motion that's on the floor.
Roll call. Okay. The current motion would be the, the first motion. Or your tabled motion. It was the first motion. Um, it's roll call for the, calling the question on the, um, on Mr. Sikolovick's motion.
Can you just clarify what, what, what's the vote for?
The motion, the original motion was to approve the elimination of two to one kindergarten paras. You're, um, you're calling the question. So the, the a yes would be to end the debate. And no would be to continue. Mr. Benahan?
Christine Baptiste Perez?
Yes.
Is Akisha Casimir?
Yes.
Ms. Mar- Maritza Tremera Jimenez?
Yes.
Mr. Willie Medina?
No.
Ms. Jennifer Perez?
Pass.
It's a Jose Kalovic?
No.
Mr. Robert Traver?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Myself, I say yes.
And I'll say yes.
Jennifer Perez?
Yes. So we could go ahead and vote on the original motion. Um, discussion of possible approval of the elimination of two to one kindergarten paras funded through Delta T.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Christine Bapt- Baptiste Perez?
No.
Is Akisha Casimir?
No.
Ms. Maritza Tremera Jimenez?
No.
Mr. Willie Medina?
Yes, with an explanation and I want to
Put your mic on. Hey, put your mic on.
Point of order, Madam Chair, only the noes have the right to give an explanation.
We've already established that two or three times. I could email it to you again.
Yeah. Mr. Medina, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, I want to talk with the board, not at the board, that way you guys know. Um, this is moving forward uh, for a vote and you guys are not considering what we have to present before the community, before uh, the state and they're ready to know, these are the changes that we got to do because of the cuts that are necessary. You know, I have a CFO over here that has been speaking to us and you guys have been, uh, some, some of the board members have been always in agreement to say, listen, let the, let those people that are uh, in the position that know the facts and know how to move these things over. We, when we discussed this in facilities, we were speaking about this is one of the things that needs to be done to make sure that we can address everybody and get them to come on our side. We just spoke before, uh, SB, uh, 1511 and there was a group of us, maybe, maybe seven to 10, the, the most. Mr. Saki was there, Avery was, Dr. Avery and some of the board members. Where was the rest of the board won? Where was the rest of the committee? And we want to motivate them to say, listen, we need everybody's cooperation. The state is looking at it. We need to pass a balanced budget, guys. You guys are my, you know, uh, my, uh, colleagues. And we need to know that, we need to show them that, listen, these are the, you know, we have to do it. We don't get more funding. How can we show the public? How can we show the state? How can we show everybody? We're not making these decisions to make sure they understand the importance of this. So I vote, that's why I'm voting the way I'm voting because we need to show, this is a, this is 44 paras uh, from the Delta, the, the Delta T that is at 1.327. Um, and, and our committee, we were saying, this is the first thing we want to bring back. So when we get 1511 in, this is the first thing that is going to be like, okay, we're going to withdraw this because we don't need to anymore because we have the money. You know, likewise, so we have to make, we have to think about it in that perspective, I think. And again, talk to you, our CFO and know that we have to come up with 30 something million dollars to make sure we get to the number we need to get to of cuts to make sure we can balance a budget. I don't know if any of yous have that kind of money in your banks to be responsible for, but we have to present a balanced budget. So respectfully, I just want to talk with the board, not at you guys to, just to think this is, we want to put the pressure on the state and everybody to see the condition that we're really at. And the only way I think, listen, I'm not going to call the fire department if I don't see fire. We need to show them that they need to come and act because they have been, excuse the terminology, you know, treated us like garbage when it comes to funding. The ECS formula has never changed in 13 years, but inflation has been what? And we have not called them out. So I talk with you guys, not at you guys. Thank you.
Mr. Benahan, go ahead.
Jennifer Perez?
No.
Mr. Joseph Sakalid?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes with an explanation as per our written bylaws. Um, our CFO has suggested making these cuts. We have suggested making these cuts when we first hired them through ESAR funding. It was understood that these positions would end. I want everybody to understand right now in committee, we went from 23 to 26 million dollars in deficit. Now we're currently sitting at 28 million, 675,000 dollars. And we're going to add 1.9 million dollars to that. So that's 31 million dollars that we're going to have to cut. Or the state is going to have to cut for us. Somebody's going to decide on these cuts. I would rather repeat us than them and it another reason why we should have made these cuts right now is because they are highly reversible. Delta T is pay per use. Right now we would be voting to not use them. If we find the money, very easy thing to do is to reverse. Okay, hire people from the Delta T contract. But right now, just to be clear, Dr. Avery, you have been tasked with getting the principals to give us 30 million dollars in cuts.
Mr. Robert Traver?
I vote yes for the same, similar reasons.
Um I, we need to start making cuts. We've got twenty-six, twenty-eight, and the number's fluctuating. Thirty million, we're up to thirty billion, and the principals are not gonna come up with thirty million dollars worth of cuts. Um and if they do, God bless them, we'll we'll give back the we can just change this. I I just don't know when we're gonna start. Uh we're meeting with the city this week, correct? To present our budget? But well, we're 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 meeting with the city this week to present our budget, and uh we're gonna present them a budget with thirty million dollar shortfall. Um and, you know, I'm gonna keep fighting with the state. Uh but I think we need to show that we're uh we're serious about what we want, and I don't hear us doing that. So I pray that we get what we're supposed to get, but I haven't seen anyone else fighting for that. Thank you.
Mr. Benahan?
Mr. Andrew Woodson?
No.
And myself, I said no. And the reason I say no, I'm tired to hurt, see, a lot of cuts, I'm tired to hurt the students. They will always spread when you do this. You make noise, let's make noise. Let's make noise to the state. I invite, let's go, all the board members, they invite everybody, and let's go to the state, let's talk. Let's talk, 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 because I know they hear us. Send an email, just message, the video, let's go face to face. I know we did it last a few of them, and I don't feel it was enough. We need to keep going, we need to talk to them, and let's make noise, let's invite uh staff, let's invite everyone. The reason why we need to keep, I'm tired to see cutting, I want to see um hurting our kids. So Madam Chair, it's.
Alright. That one does not pass. Miss Nipple?
Just for clarity, just for clarity to the board, when the board adopted current year FY twenty-five budget, you adopted a gap closing measure. In that gap closing measure, the board adopted the elimination of two to one para for all practical purposes. You really don't have to adopt it because you already adopted it. Very frank with everyone, it's part of the budget package that the board adopted for this current year. It's in the plan. The board adopted the budget with the plan in it of elimination of two to one para. Yes? Yes?
Thank you.
We're just repeating ourselves, so we're adopting what you already adopted or rejecting what you already adopted. Let me put it that way.
And the next item is discussion of possible approval of elimination of eleven restorative practice positions that were funded through Esser.
Motion to eliminate.
You have to put your microphone on if you're gonna make a motion.
Can you hear me?
We have somebody on, we don't have a a court recorder here, they're online. They cannot hear you.
Uh motion to approve the elimination of eleven restorative practice positions that were funded with Esser funds.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Traver, seconded by Mrs. Sokolovik. Any debate on that item?
Call the question. Motion to call the question.
Alright, there's a motion actually call the question. Um roll call vote. To call the question. We can't debate it, we have to call the question.
No debate.
Mr. Benahan, can you take the vote?
Quick point on speaking to the calling the question part, we should at least give the superintendent and CFO a chance to present on the question. Because we've had several people say, listen to the superintendent, let's hear from the professionals, let's hear from the professionals.
Want to take back your call to question? Or do you want to continue calling it? You did. He made the motion.
I removed my second.
And Mr. Sokolovik's removing his second. So, Mr. Payers motion's on the floor without a second. So Dr. Avery, would you like to explain this one?
I'll let Mr. explain this one. I can clarify if he doesn't get it the way we need to be.
So Madam Chair, basically what the board is doing or what the superintendent is proposing here, we have um we're basically swapping to classification of positions. Because by look, from the state perspective, we have to have in-school suspension. So that's what we're basically doing. We're basically unfunding the restorative practice positions using the money to hire in-school suspension to be in compliance with the state guidelines. So it's really not a reduction or it's not a savings, it's not, we're basically retaining trying to retain the service of in-school suspension, which is in accordance to the state guideline and law admitting the grant requirements. That's what we're doing. The restorative practice practitioners, they don't fit the criteria that the state requires. Dr. Avery, you can expiate.
Yeah, for further clarifications, what had, what happened a couple of years ago, the district used to have in-school suspension officers. Previous administration came in and eliminated in-school suspension officers and implemented restorative practices facilitators. Last year, the state of Connecticut, you know, you know, in their compliance division, came back to the district and said that the district is out of compliance because the state requires in-school suspension officers in schools in order to fulfill the option for other than spending kids out of school suspension. And so what we did last year with leftover COVID dollars was to reinstate in-school suspension officers with with the help of the union, that that position is um, how you call it?
It's subbed out to talent.
It's it's their, it's their position as a union, uh in-school suspension officers. So what we did last year and this year, we use Delta subs to fill that void for this year. Next year, we have to have a funding source because we have no no more Esser dollars. And so in-school suspension dollars that were were allocated through operational funding is going to be replacing the funding for in-school suspension. We've restored the practices dollars is going to be replacing uh those dollars that we're gonna need to be in compliance with the in-school suspension officers. So there's not gonna be a savings. This has to happen regarding, or we're gonna have to find another million dollars to keep, you know, to keep restorative and keep in-school suspension to be in compliance. So that's where we are with this, for clarity.
Dr. Avery, does that guarantee the eleven restorative practice positions have, they have a job next year? Or do they have to apply for these jobs?
Exactly. They would have to, go ahead and make sure that I'm.
See this position?
So yes, because the restorative practices individuals are not members of a bargaining unit, and the ISS position is a NAGE position, we would have to post it. These people can't apply, but we'd have to post it and fill it according to uh collective bargaining.
Wouldn't be guaranteed their job.
They would not be guaranteed because we'd have to.
Essentially, these are layoffs.
Correct, correct. And they can apply and, you know, as long as it fulfills the NAGE bargaining agreement rules for job postings and acceptance into job, then we can hire.
And what's the timeline for these positions in order to not have to continue? Is it the end of March?
It's it's passed. We are, we're currently working with the with the union on um a couple negotiations, so I don't want to go too deep into it in public. Um but we're working on negotiations with the job description for the ISS position so that it can involve some of our of our restorative practices um roles.
And how many ISS positions do we currently have?
Right now, we have zero.
You have zero.
So we would have eleven?
We're thinking right now that we can probably cover the district with nine in-school suspension officers. And they would be going through multiple sites throughout the district.
Mr. Sokolovik?
Yes, um speaking with some of the people today, I learned that um nine out of the eleven used to be um ISS.
That's correct.
Does the, does the NAGE contract have recall rights? Because it.
They do have recall rights if these people were laid off from that position. They would have first dibs. Correct.
Can we not um negotiate with NAGE that these people have first dibs at the job since they've been in the district?
Well, that would be, that would be the recall rights. So if these positions come back, then they would have the first right of it. As long as it's been less than two years, which I believe it has been. It has been. So they would have right of first callback for the people who were laid off from that position. So if there were other members who weren't laid off but necessarily took another position, that wouldn't apply to them.
So they, they took this position as we started, so they didn't apply to these people.
What's that?
It doesn't apply to these people. They weren't laid off from ISS. They took a new position as we started practice.
No, but they, they could have been laid off from ISS because what my understanding was, what happened is the ISS position was eliminated.
Yes.
And these people were laid off. Then restorative practices positions came along and they took those. Now, if they were laid off from an ISS position, they would have the right of first uh first comeback.
Mr. Medina? Mr. Traver?
So Omar is restorative practice? Omar Resto is a restorative practice person?
Yes.
Yes.
So he would go back to being an ISS position?
Well, we shouldn't use names of people.
Well.
If if he was laid off from that position, yes, he would be able to come back.
The other, the other piece to Madam Chair is that you have to understand that there may not be the same salary in these positions as well. So someone may not want to go to a lower salary if they were making a higher salary because it's in-school suspension officers, we're gonna set that salary.
I understand that, but I'm, I I would be like floored if you're telling me that we eliminated ISS positions and created a position that pays more.
We did.
We did.
Absolutely, you did.
Because.
I wasn't here.
Mi- Mr. Medina? And then Miss Baptiste Perez. So Mr. Medina?
Get back to the Hasi, sir, with all due respect. There was a lot of things being thrown about information, and I thought it was clear, but it wasn't, but I need you to give me clarity. If, but uh there's eleven restorative practitioners working right now. And it was said that the ISS people were taken out back in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-three. You, you're telling me I need to know from you, are the nine out of the eleven, like somebody said yes, but I need to hear from you, are nine out of the eleven were part of the ISS team that was laid off? Yes or no?
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, let's get that information for us, please. Because I mean, this is, I hear the outcry, also hear the outcry, our outcry of the community of the staff saying what these people are done. I heard students talk about that. So to hold them in those positions and then have them be, you know, kind of like smarter in the sense of they're doing that job, to have them I S S back, and I think uh the union is listening. Um you know, we need to figure out to fight for their 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 position because these are Bridgeport people that have been working and doing a job, and if they were laid off, we need to know that.
If they were laid off, there should be a recall list that would exist for this ISS position, and we would go through that recall list. Because technically, even if they're not restorative practices, but they were laid off and they had the most seniority, and they're not a restorative practice, technically, we have to offer it to that person before any of the restorers.
That's why I have that question, because I think today, you guys should have had that information for us respectfully. I gotta, you know, I gotta hold everybody accountable, but respectfully, we should have had that information tonight.
Doesn't change anything.
Well, it does change because again, we know the truth. Okay, you can't say it doesn't change it because we're saying that it's nine hundred, sorry, it's nine hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and eight uh funds we're using according to it in committee. It's, we're using that money now, so it's not a true savings, so that's why I call that false data in my paperwork. Is we're using it now to hire back, that we could be compliant with the state, the ISS. So it does have a merit because if those people automatically would have bumping rights or not bumping rights, do we call rights? So we're only talking about really cutting two of those because we gotta eliminate the position. Those other ones have to go back because we know that they were things. So that does come into it a fact. I don't know if my 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 colleagues are understanding me, but it comes to play. So we should have that data because then it covers us because we know that they're gonna be coming back and they wouldn't have to be out here in that big outcry because they have rights to come back to their positions. And I understand there's contracts up, you can't talk about everything, but yes, it does make a difference. Because they'll know where they stand, and they don't know where they're standing right now. According to them, they're being laid off. But they have rights according to what I'm being understood because they were part of that team that was laid off, you know.
My guess is if they were laid off, they know they have these recall rights because they know.
Why don't you know? Why can't you guys tell me that answer respectfully? You should be able to answer that question that do they, and you say you don't know that. And that's where I have a problem.
Alright. Dr. Avery? Miss Baptiste Perez?
Oh, what's the salary?
Say that more time, you cut off.
Restorative practice.
The salary?
Hold on, you cut off, Ma- Miss Baptiste Perez, can you ask the question more time?
What's the salary difference for ISS and restorative practice? Are we gonna realize?
Three, um two, Madam Chair, the the restorative practice practitioners are making each one of them their base salary is forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's their base salary. But when you include, when you include their fringes, when you include your fringe benefits, the MRF, which is pension and health insurance, it comes up to, I think, about eighty thousand, average of eighty thousand or eighty-three thousand per employee. So the number is easier, the nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is inclusive of all benefits, all the health, health insurance and MRF. It's all inclusive. But their base sal- their base salary is um forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. The rest of the money increase or is um health insurance and and pension costs. Yep, eighty-five thousand, forty-seven thousand is their salary, the rest is fringes. For restorative practitioners.
How much was ISS? I think she asked.
The ISS is forty-three thousand from what Dominic is saying, so again, forty-three depends. If it's forty-three thousand two years ago, with cost of living increase, it's probably about forty-six, which is almost parallel to the in-school suspension, to the restorative practitioner. If it's forty-three two years ago, you add about at least six percent tourist. Six percent under forty-three, so you're close to the same, about the same salary. So it's probably gonna be an even wash. Maybe one less person to hire.
Any, anything else, Miss Baptiste Perez?
Nope.
Mr. Medina? No?
Thank you.
Alright, there's been a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I I just in the who should have, should have, should have, should have, it is a safe bet, they don't all know they have recall rights. So it is appropriate for you to advise them when you, when you do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Benahan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here we go again, at the same thing I talked about the para, paras. But these people right now, you guys have to know how to busy, how to go with them, talk to them, visit them, how they, what they do with the students. I'm witness. I know, as I say, we need to save money, we understand that, but we hurting our kids. I know them. I know them for so many years. You you board members, you receive emails from from teachers, from principal students. You know what they do. They don't only do all in the position they have. They do more. They extra, extra million miles they do for our students of Bridgeport Public School. They do more. They extra, extra million miles they do for our students of Bridgeport Public School. They trust them. They call them. I'm telling you, I'm being witness and I challenge any person, tell me it's not true. Because we, we board members here, they know how they work. They're amazing. And I will keep fighting for them. As I say. Let's make noise so hard for they can understand we need money.
Sorry.
That's the only thing why I want to say, let's make noise so hard for understand what we need money. I know it's a little difficult. We understand, I respect everybody's opinion and decision and vote. But we have to understand we hurting our kids. And trust me, a lot of kids, they don't have that trust, faith, love, home. They have it in school. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Avery, is, um, the ISS position going to do what the restorative practice does? So ISS, are they going to sit in a, in a classroom or gym or something and just watch kids do a packet versus the restorative practice who were actually. Supporting social emotional learning, supporting behavior interventions, supporting PPTs? What's the, what's the difference in?
The in-school suspension, you know, person is an in-school, it's a classroom where kids go, you know. They will do lessons. They will, they can also do lessons on restorative. They can do some of those same similar things with, with some additional training. But it's really, kids are coming in, they're doing the works, teachers are rotating through the classroom with support. And that's the basics of the in-school suspension perspective. Uh, so it's, it's really different. Uh, but again, that is the requirement of the state to have the in-school suspension classroom. So.
Yeah, just to add to what, um, Dr. Avery was sharing, the, um, in-school, um, suspension. Well, new in-school suspension officers, I think that's part of what, um, that, um, was getting at. Um, will need to have some level of restorative training. Um, so that would, um, so they'll be able to serve as the in-school suspension officer as well as provide, um. Restorative, um, assistance and measures to students. So I don't think it's one or the other in this instance. I think it's the person being able to do both.
Thank you. Ms. Baptiste Perez?
Call the question.
Madam Chair. I have a question.
You called the question? Oh, there's no motion on the floor. There was no second to that motion. So, Mr. Traver? You cut, you cut off?
How many, how many, um. How many?
She seconded your motion because you never called your motion.
Pardon me?
She seconded your motion. She made a second to your motion.
They can call the question.
You, you, you made a motion earlier. Nobody seconded it. She seconded your motion. You, you made the motion. You did. You made a motion. To eliminate eleven restorative practice positions. She'll second in it. To eliminate, he, he took back his second. You never took back your motion. So there was an opportunity to make a second. She made the second.
Okay, so I still have a question.
And then she called the question. So the call to question needs to be seconded, but.
So she didn't.
That happens, I second. So Mr. Traver has the floor.
I have a question, which is. The in-school suspension, you said these, uh, nine individuals are going to cover the entire district. The restorative practice, they cover how many schools?
Eleven schools for the eleven people currently, yes.
So it's a, it, it's a whole different kettle of fish.
That is correct.
Right. Okay, so I'm, just to be clear, you know, I want, we, we've been sort of dancing around the edge of that question and. I want, you know, they are doing quality work in one school essentially, right?
Um, the role will be a completely different role.
Right.
From what they're currently doing.
I just want to be clear about the change that we're making. Um, we are accommodating the state's requirement that we have an in-school suspension program. And we're going to do that by rotating in-school suspension officers around the district. So that each school will have an in-school suspension day or two, depending on the size of the school. When a student can be sent down to a given classroom for in-school suspension. Uh, or a given room for in-school suspension. Um, versus what's happening with this position, which is a high quality, uh, restorative practice room where that. Individual is doing some quality work with the students in that facility. Um, so it is apples and oranges that we're talking about here, not the same thing. Okay, thank you.
So.
Second the motion, call the question.
Now we called the question, so now there's no more. Uh, now we have to, uh, vote on calling the question. So how about that? So the question has been called. All in favor of calling the question? We're roll calling the, the call to question for this item. A yes means we end debate, a no means we continue. Mr. Benahan?
Christine Baptiste Perez?
Pass.
Mr. Kishakasimir?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Maritza Estramera Jimenez?
No.
Mr. William Medina?
Favorit and what we're voting against again?
Ending debate. We're ending debate.
Mr. Jennifer Perez?
No.
Joseph Sakalit?
Yes.
Betraver?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrew Woodson?
No, no.
Go back, Christine Baptiste Perez?
Yes.
And Mr. William Medina?
Yes.
Myself, I vote yes.
Alright, that's passed. So the, no more debate. Um. We'll take a vote on the original motion, which is to eliminate eleven restorative practice positions that were funded with ESSER funds.
Roll call vote.
Roll called by Mrs. Calvitt. So, Mr. Benahan?
Christine Baptiste Perez? Sorry, Christine Baptiste Perez?
Pass.
Mr. Kishakasimir?
I abstain.
Ms. Maritza Estramera Jimenez?
No.
Mr. William Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Jennifer Perez?
Abstain.
Mr. Joseph Sakalit?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Traver?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Woodson?
No, no.
I vote no. And Ms. Christine Baptiste Perez? Ms. Christine Baptiste Perez?
Wait, what's, is vote three, three with two extensions right now?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote yes. Uh, my explanation, I believe there are. Ways to save money, closing.
Me, Christine Baptiste Perez, we can understand.
You're picking up. Can you repeat?
Yeah, well, my explanation is we have a whole bunch of old facilities, so we're probably closed and not waste our human capital. But we need to do something for the budget. So I'm going to vote in favor of yes and give the majority to lay off these positions.
Got four, three, still abstain.
Passes?
Passes.
The next item is discussion of possible approval of reduction of public facilities over time. Mr. Nickwell?
Madam Chair, basically, since the board voted to, at the eliminate, for the elimination of the eleven restorative practitioners. Just to be clarity. If you vote.
I'm sorry, point of, point of information. We did not vote. We voted to approve a budget request with the understanding that the budget gap closing measures would become.
Okay.
Would come later, so.
Okay.
Must be on the right page with that.
I apologize for my wrong, my choice of words. Basically, the replenishment or reinstatement of the, uh. In-school suspension is going to be, is going to be catered or funded with the monies from the. Restorative practice positions that's been provided with your first vote that you just did. So that money is going to. You just voted to, just voted to unfund restorative practice position. That money is going to be used to fund the in-school suspension positions, which is what the state wants. So net-net, it does not give you any savings or cost. You voted to save money, you're voting to spend that same money again in a, in a nutshell. It's a flip. Makes sense? There's no financial impact of hearing.
We're on the next item.
Isn't that this one?
Facilities overtime.
Okay, they didn't take this too. Okay, the last item, sorry, I'm sorry. The last item on the agenda is basically, um, reducing public facility. Public facilities overtime spending level from current year. The idea behind that is that. They did a lot of overtime with ESSER money when they had ESSER projects. The district cannot. Continue to afford that trend of overtime going forward. So we're reducing the overtime next year by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Come next year, I have to provide them with a seasonal overtime trend. Basically map their overtime on a monthly basis. Based on seasonality because overtime, overtime trend goes by seasonality. You cannot do a straight line projection. You have to go based on seasonality and needs of the season. So I'm going to provide public faci, I use the word public facilities, operations department. The trend, historical trend of overtime. Based on seasonality, they have to follow it and they have to report to the, they have to report to the CFO and the superintendent. On a monthly basis. Make sure we're in line. So that's what, this is basically containing overtime spending. Or streamlining everybody's spending. It's not just them, everybody in the district. We have to tighten our belts pretty much.
Madam Chair? I move that we approve the reduction of facilities overtime.
The move by Mrs. Calvitt, second by Ms. Baptiste Perez. Any further debate?
Yes.
Mrs. Calvitt?
Absolutely. Since we seem to be on a spending spree and we've made our deficit from. Twenty-eight million dollars to thirty-one million dollars and we're moving in the wrong direction anyway. I vote, I, I suggest we vote no on this because our facilities are in ill repair. Facilities was the only department that take a hit in the last year's budget when everybody, when we went on a hiring spree for administration. Um, and our facilities are in such deplorable conditions. We did the facilities master plan, which was supposed to save money somewhere in my budget. There's a line item to save money this year and I still have no idea why it's there. Um, because we're not closing schools for the next four years. So facilities is going to need that money. And I would love to propose to amend it to give them another couple of hundred thousand dollars to upkeep the schools that are going to remain open. For the next four years while we build new schools. Because right now our kids are in horrendous conditions. Nobody could argue that.
We haven't voted to build new schools.
I, we've, we voted on the, the facilities master plan is proposing to move forward. Dr. Avery came out in a newspaper and said, we're not doing anything until the new schools are built. That's a four-year timeline that the children are still in these schools that are in ill repair. And we're going to cut the facilities budget that's supposed to help them repair those schools. To have our children living in better conditions in their schools? No, that's unconscionable. So I'm going to vote no on that. Thank you.
Ms. Estramera Jimenez?
So, um, I will be voting yes for the cut to, um. The reduction of OT for facilities because I do feel we do need to make a cut. Um, however, I feel like we, facilities has taken the brunt of it in terms of overtime. We should be looking across the entire department for overtime reductions, not just facilities, because I feel like that's not fair. Additionally, I did want to elaborate on my comment about the principals, um, survey. I'm not asking them to look for thirty million dollars worth of savings. It is not practical to do that. What I'm asking them to find is some sort of savings so that. Excuse me, so that we can save the special, um, the Paris. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for. Any little bit helps. Every single penny at this point counts.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Traver?
Yeah, what is the impact of this proposal?
The fact is that they just have to monitor, they have to monitor employees overtime carefully. I mean, if you're not monitoring people and.
Mr. Garcia?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
I think Mr. Garcia wants to ask.
This is, um. You know, once again, we, we understand the current situation and we, we've started the process of getting ahead of this. We've met whatever you had custodian in the district last week. We started discussing the first round of cuts. We discussed last year's cuts. We discussed the cuts in the previous years and now this additional cut. Um, when we talk about overtime, overtime encompasses a lot of different things. It's just not. Uh, it's just not ESSER projects, it's coverage for staff. It's after-school activities. I mean, the list goes on and on. At the end of the day, we're in a very difficult situation as a school district. So we're going to do whatever we have to do in order to help that situation. But with that is going to come some pain because obviously we all know at this point, we don't have enough staff to cover every shift. We also understand that we don't have staff in a day outside of one custodian. I mean, you know, we're, we're asking a lot from the folks. What we will be doing this summer, we'll be working with each individual head custodian at every single campus, redefining all of the schedules. And once again, we're going to be asking our staff to do more. But the fact is that we understand that there is a deficit that we've got to overcome. Um, but you know, we've got to start looking at this in the near future because this is unsustainable for the school district.
Hi, 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 George. Thank you, George. I. Three hundred and fifty thousand was the dollar amount that I was looking for. I just hadn't picked it up in the document.
Okay.
But thank you.
Any further debate on this, discussion on this? Alright, there's been a motion. Uh, Ms. Baptiste Perez, you have a question?
No, I. Plans to see if a motion was made.
Yeah, there was a motion made.
Okay.
Mrs. Calvitt made the motion?
Yes.
And the second, I think you seconded it. Um. Is there any further debate? We'll, we'll take a vote.
Can it be a roll call?
Yes, we can do roll call.
Ms. Christine Baptiste Perez?
Pass.
Mr. Kishakasimir?
No.
No.
Ms. Maritza Estramera Jimenez?
Yeah.
Sorry, let's omit side conversations for now. I think he told you.
Just to be clear.
That's what we were voting on.
On the overtime. Um, the reduction of public facilities.
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. William Medina?
Yes, with a small explanation, especially to, uh, Mr. George Garcia. He understands where we are. And again, I'm voting yes because I want to make sure that the district and everyone knows, the community, the state, everyone knows. This is happening because we are missing funds that we haven't been getting. So that's why I want to vote yes. This is the only department that has been underfunded dramatically. And we expect more and more and they're their only department that is bringing funds into the district and then sharing it across the district. Instead of keeping it all for themselves. So I applaud George and his staff and everybody. And I apologize for this vote, but we have to do it because I want to show that we can get the money and we can get that other staff that we had to let go.
Thank you.
Is Jennifer Perez?
Yes.
Did Joseph Sakalit?
Vote no with an explanation.
Put your mic on.
Oh, sorry.
One of all know with an explanation, facility, as I said, facilities has been hit hard in the last few years. Our kids are gonna be in deplorable condition for the next four years. And Mr. Garcia is an employee who may be reluctant to fuck what his boss may want.
Mr. Robert Traver?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Woodson?
No.
Going back to Christine Baptiste Perez?
Yes, with a brief explanation that this is a desert.
Six to three, Madam Chair, pass.
That one passes. Um, I just want to also add before we um let go for the night, um, board members, if you have not submitted yours, a board evaluation, please send that ASAP. Um, there's three still missing and um, one of the reasons we had the uh issue from the state today was because they saw we weren't doing our trainings. So we can talk more about that, but make sure you're handing in your self-evaluation or board evaluation, I should say. Um, at this point, any, is there motion to adjourn, Mr. Traver?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just need to update the board where we stand on the spreadsheet.
You can do that.
Because the board, because item number
One.
Item number one on page eight was not approved by the board. That one point three million dollars potential savings is not there anymore. So I have to add it to the twenty-eight point six million dollars remaining deficit. Now the remaining deficit, as we leave this meeting, remaining deficit to cover for next year is thirty million dollars.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, my personal privilege, please remove me as chair of the finance committee because this board is moving in the wrong direction and it's inevitable, it's stake it's inevitable that the state is gonna come in and take us over and do our job for us and I don't want to invest too much of my time and efforts into this anymore.
Is there most, there's been a motion to adjourn, is there a second? The motion made by Mr. Traver, seconded by Mr. Bennett, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Meeting adjourns at ten twenty-seven.